I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices that might, so we can avoid any disruptions. If anyone here is planning on testifying, we'd ask you to sign up at the sign up sheet in the back, so we know who you are. Okay, we're, we're, it is Wednesday, it is the twenty seventh day of July, it's a Wednesday. The time is six o'clock, it's set for the public hearing tonight, all three commissioners are present. Mr. Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. We have some unfinished business that we need to take up first, so I would ask for a motion to proceed with the unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and we will consider the application number two zero two, two zero zero, two one one, S dash P R dash V A C, Jaren Langston. We'll first hear from the staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this item, the applicant has requested it be tabled again to our August tenth.
Oh, tenth.
August tenth, okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to table two zero two two, zero zero, two one one, S P R V A C, to August tenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, I will open the public hearing on application number two zero two, two zero zero, seven one one, dash S H D P L L C, preliminary plat for three buildable lots. We'll first hear a report from, from staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, application two zero, two two, zero zero, seven one one, dash S, this is Yellowstone Ridge subdivision, applicant is H D P L L C. So this is a preliminary plat for three buildable lots, property is located on Robinson Road, contains thirty-seven point nine five acres in the rural residential district. You'll see here, property is kind of southwest of, of Kuna, northeast of Melba, they're close to the Cannon County line. So as I stated, there's going to be three buildable lots, all lots will be rural residential lots, consist of a minimum of ten acres is required, all of them will be over eleven acres. Lot access and frontage will be off of Robinson Road, the south power lateral borders the western property boundary, and it shall remain protected, and it is within an existing easement. So you'll see here on your screen, lots one in red, lot two in blue, lot three in yellow there. The subdivision does comply with chapter eight dash six of the Ada County Code, since the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards for the rural residential district, the property is an unincorporated Ada County, and not within an area of city impact, therefore Ada County Comp Plan is the applicable comp plan, as well as the future land use map. You'll see here, the future land use map designates the site as agriculture irrigated, which lists agriculture as a primary use, and residences as a secondary use, as all the proposed lots will be over eleven acres in size, and continue to be conducive to agricultural uses, the sub is compatible with the adopted land use map. We do not have any agency opposition to this application, you'll see here, Central District Health must approve a land development application, and then also the county engineer noted, noted that this is a nitrate priority area, so wells will have to be tested at that time. There was, you know, some opposition from the nearby owners of the CAFO properties, which are the livestock confinement facilities, they're just opposed in general to more residences, more lots being created near their facilities. Staff and P N Z are recommending approval with the conditions you see before you. Stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of our staff?
I'd just stand.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant, if the applicant is here, our representative of the applicant. Okay, could you give us your name for the record?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner's Board, my name is Nathaniel Davis, partner with H D P L L C. I have submitted the application, is there any questions that you have for me, far as on the, on the application?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
It appears that there's been some opposition to this, have you had a chance to talk to your neighbors?
That's correct, you know, I have not reached out to them, nor they have not reached out to me, I do have a little extensive background on dealing with a neighbor that has a CAFO, my partner grew up on a dairy farm in Middleton, and I deal with the industry on a daily basis. I think this is smart planning, we, we adjusted those two lots that bordered, not necessarily bordered, there's a fifty-four foot easement with the south power lateral that's contiguous to our properties, so there is a buffer there, but I, I felt like that the way we issued those two other lots, there would be a building envelope quite a bit away from the CAFO, so there wouldn't be any issues of building right up on top of them, so we felt that it was sufficient enough, and being friendly neighbor as to be. Far as, as nuisances and worrying and concern about that, you know, there's the Right to Farm Act, they're protected, anybody that's going to purchase any property out there is obviously going to know that there's going to be elements attached, so it's all about being a good neighbor, and, and obviously if something happens, there's accidents happen all the time, you know, just try to keep it as clean and respectful as possible, but I believe that, that the way this is set up with these three lot, lots, there's going to be plenty of buffer, and be able to have a standing relationship and good standing.
Okay, and follow up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, yes.
As a condition of approval, if we approve this, would you be willing to put in your purchase agreements, the, the language that states the agricultural rights, I think Richard or Leon, you know what, which one it is, right? Just to make sure if it's from somebody from, out of the state, that they're not familiar with Idaho's laws, agriculture does?
Be honest with you, I think that's taking away from rights, as us as a property owner, we already know those guidelines per Ada County and the state Idaho, and it's us and our job if we sell one of those properties to disclose any adverse effects that might be apparent to the neighborhood, so I think it would be taking rights away from us if we had to put any kind of inclusion in, in that contract. Ada County already has regulations, Farm, Right to Farm Act already has regulations, D E Q has regulations for the CAFO permits, it's already in play, there's nothing new coming out, and just so you guys know, a good comparison, there's a dairy that's ripe hard smack in the middle of city of Kuna, and they operate on a daily basis, and everybody knows.
Sure, I understand this, what I'm trying to get at is if it's somebody from out of state that doesn't understand Idaho's laws, it makes them, it makes it easy for them to understand, so they don't come and complain later after the fact, we're trying to mitigate upfront for you.
Sure, understandable, but obviously, that's something that is, has to be dictated with that transaction of that, sell of that property. I don't believe having a condition on this and putting strict nuisance guidelines when they're already there for Right to Farm Act and Ada County has, already has guidelines for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, is there, are there any other questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else to testify on this, on this issue? Here we go, you'd like to come up, state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
I, I submitted a PowerPoint, I'm not sure.
Oh, there we go.
I'll pull it up for you, one sec.
Okay, thank you.
Could you state, give us your name for the record?
Sure, Katie Van Vliet, I'm an attorney with Sawtooth Law Offices, our office address is eleven oh one West River Street, Suite one-ten Boise, Idaho.
Who do you represent?
So we represent the Idaho Dairymen's Association, who represents the interests of all dairy producers in Idaho, and we also represent Mr. Van Der Skoff, who owns the dairy immediately to the north, that shares a property line with the proposed subdivision.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, so I've already stated who I'm here on behalf, sorry, what was that?
Oh, you just have three minutes, I just, just reiterating, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So I've already stated who I'm here on behalf of, and we respectfully request that you deny this development, because it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, the Ada County's zoning ordinance, and will threaten ag operations in the area. To keep things brief, I direct you to the written testimony that I submitted in advance of this meeting for more details on why this should be denied. I, uh, switch slide, please. Idaho's dairy industry ranks third in the nation in terms of milk production, in twenty twenty, the dairy industry in Idaho provided approximately forty-four hundred jobs on dairies, forty-six hundred jobs in processing, and additional twenty-four thousand jobs in supporting businesses to our state. It also brought ten point seven billion dollars in sales to Idaho's economy, and dairy farmers paid approximately a hundred and fifty-five million dollars in state and local taxes. Despite this great contribution to Idaho's economy, dairy farmers are struggling to continue to operate in this state due to the urban sprawl and the challenges it brings to their farms. The closer you allow subdivisions like this to encroach on these farms, the harder you make it for their farms to continue. I was surprised to see that the application materials and staff report completely failed to mention that this subdivision shares a property line with a dairy farm, despite this being an incompatible use. As you can see in my PowerPoint, switch slides, please. Mr. Van Der Skoff's dairy lies immediately to the north and shares a property line with this proposed subdivision, his lagoon is also located right there near the property line, and switch slide, please. On this zoomed out picture, you can see that the proposed development is surrounded by four other dairies and dairy owned land, all of which is used for the application of manure under Idaho State Department of Agriculture nutrient management plans. The applicant states that they intend for each lot to include a small farm, however, we cannot be sure that that is what the purchasers of these lots will actually do with them, and even if they do have small farms, there's a huge difference between a small hobby farm and the large ag operations in this area that contribute to Ada County in the form of jobs, taxes, and economic trade. The applicant is comparing apples to oranges, and this point should not weigh in favor of their request to develop this land. Irrigated ag land in Ada County is disappearing very quickly. If we allow development to continue like this in ag areas, we are going to lose an industry that contributes hugely to our economy, it is also irresponsible to be allowing new wells and septic fields to be installed, when an infill development that could connect to city water and sewer would be more appropriate. Furthermore, this sets bad precedent for other developers who may want to develop ag land, which will further threaten the viability of these agricultural operations. I urge you to uphold the comprehensive plan and policies of this county, and deny this application, and preserve the ag industry which makes our state so prosperous. If you're still inclined to approve this application, then I propose that we table the final decision to a subsequent meeting date, and negotiate an agreement for a nuisance waiver, as proposed in my written testimony, in which I will stand for questions about. Thank you for your time.
What is a nuisance waiver?
Sure, so, we've actually done this in other counties, in the Magic Valley, for example, they're very protective, and they recognize that CAFOs were there first, they're well established existing use, and their residences just don't, they're not compatible next to a large scale dairy farm. So one of their conditions of approval is they have the developer sign and record an agreement that basically says that if this dairy allows this development to come in, in the future, they can't object to any expansion or changes, and they can't be complaining about, you know, normal operations that the Right to Farm Act protects, and so, I know there's the Right to Farm Act, but it's just, people don't understand it, and it's unfortunate, because a lot of these farmers have to go hire a lawyer like me, to explain to people what the Right to Farm Act means, and spend their own money trying to defend their own operation, so it just kind of helps make it a little more clear, and it makes those property owners, when they purchase that property, know that, you know, I can't complain about silly things, there's this Right to Farm Act, and I have to honor that.
And that's called a nuisance waiver, and that's recorded, as, as, is it a deed restriction, or how's that recorded?
So usually, we, we draft it as an agreement between the CAFO owner and the developer, lot owner, sign it, and it gets recorded against the property, so that it'll show up in all future title reports, and purchasers of the property, from there on out, will know of the restriction and the agreement that was reached.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, just to sort of zoom in on your objection, I mean, the dairy just doesn't want people moving into that land because they may complain later, is that the gist of your argument?
So it just, it, it's, it's kind of a complicated situation, I guess, as more people are removed from agriculture, right, there's less farmers in our society now, and there's less people to understand how farms work, and so it just sets, when you put up a CAFO, and then you allow all these neighbors to move in around it, it kind of disrupts this natural system of farming and the water, and there's just so many things that, that just don't work out, so for example, residential, we've seen a lot of issues with residential neighbors not maintaining drainage ditches, which then cause it to back up on the dairy's property, or they don't irrigate properly, which takes the dairy's water, or they allow the weeds to just go crazy, and then it's spreading to all the neighboring fields, and then they don't want you to crop dust, and it just, it kind of makes the everyday operations much more difficult to do. So it's, it's very expensive, extensive and widespread, and there's just a lot of implications of putting these two uses next to each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had another question, you, you implied that this would violate Ada County's comprehensive plan, our staff person just told us, and the Planning and Zoning Commission just suggested that it fits within the comprehensive plan, could you, could you explain the differences?
Sure, so I detailed this at length in my written testimony, which you can refer to, I don't have that in front of me, so I'll try to remember, but there was quite a few comprehensive plan goals that talk about preserving ag land and protecting it, and when you go and put houses on prime irrigatable farmland, to me, that's just, that's not protecting ag land, that's taking away from it, and by putting that residential use in the middle of such extensive agricultural land, you're making it harder for all those properties around you to operate as well. There's also numerous comprehensive plan goals that talk about promoting development within infill areas and connecting to city water and sewer. Again, this is allowing you to drop new wells, new septic fields out where city and water and sewer are not available, so there's numerous, numerous places that one could argue that this is not compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there any other one, any other, anybody, anyone else that wants to testify? Okay, here, come on up. If you could take your name for the record.
My name is Ted Van Der Skoff, I reside at thirty-six, thirty-three West Green Lane in Kuna, and I am the operator of said dairy that's on the border of this petitioner's property. I operate Van Der Skoff Farms, I rent that dairy, the dairy is owned by Grasslands Dairy LLC, unfortunately, the owner of that property would have been here to oppose this also, but he came down with COVID this week, so he's not here, so I'm representing both of us. I also want to disclose, I'm on the I D A board myself, so I'm privy, the Idaho Dairy Association Board, so I'm privy to kind of a lot of what Katie was talking about there. I am fully in opposition to this, I understand the legalities and, and the ordinances about how you split properties in the area, but with the dairies being there and the CAFOs, we have a multimillion dollar industry there, that's where we put our dairies so that we were away from homes, that's where we recited, we went through the processes twenty years ago, and now you're moving homes into our area, we were specifically put there to keep the homes away from us. I understand that the ordinance says you have to be over ten acres, but it also says, I think, production agriculture, you can call this agriculture, you can put a horse out on a wheat patch and call it agriculture or country lifestyle, but there is no production here, it's not adding to the local community other than the construction, he's going to make, the petitioner's going to make his money on, on the sale of this land, he's going to run off, and the new homeowner's going to build, he's going to be real happy with it until next summer, and then he's going to have dust and flies at his barbecue on the Fourth of July, it's going to be my problem. This is what Katie's talking about, you, I, I wish you guys would bring in the state milk inspector, or the D E Q, or the EPA, and see how many calls they get, complaints statewide due to these kind of issues. You guys are the gatekeeper, unfortunately, you guys are the ones that make these decisions. I understand, for most of Ada County, this is probably conducive to have these kind of splits and to build these kind of homes, but in this particular area, I think it's a mistake, it's going to lead to problems, it's potentially going to push us out. Mr. Davis, the petitioner, mentioned that there's a dairy right in the middle of Kuna, well, guess what, Mr. Davis, that dairy shut down on the First of July. There's too much pressure, too much traffic, he couldn't do it anymore, and unfortunately, I'm afraid that's going to happen to all the rest of us south of the hill. We all still want to be there, we own large pieces of land, but we can't control every piece, we've tried to create a buffer, but I can't stop everything, some guys get in, and they buy some ground, they want to put house in, that's just kind of the nature of the deal right now, that doesn't make it a good idea, it's going to hurt our industry. We have four milk plants in this valley, they employ a lot of people, if we push all the dairies out of this valley, it's not just going to be the dairies going away, it's going to be the milk plants as well, a lot of people employed there. Unfortunately, again, you guys are the gatekeepers on this, I know it's not, doesn't seem like it should be you guys, but it is, so appreciate your time, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for the?
No.
I have a question about this nuisance agreement that you're, the lawyer brought up, are you familiar with that?
I'm not as familiar with it as her, she, you know, I, I understand the Right to Farm law, but as, as she said, you know, we have a lot of people coming in that do not understand Right to Farm, they understand I was there first, when they get, you know, dust or flies, they're going to call milk inspectors, they're going to call all the acronyms you can think of, the state agencies, and complain, and I'm going to get, I'm going to have to field all those calls and defend myself, so that's what we're trying to prevent, we're trying to make them knowledgeable before and instead of after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else here that wants to speak on this issue? If, if not, I will close the public hearing on application number two zero two, two zero zero seven, what's that?
Rebuttal.
Oh yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry, you get a rebuttal, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Bottom line is, I just want to reiterate that there's already rules and guidelines in play, and I, I don't feel that it's necessary that we need to reinvent the wheel, it's all about being good neighbors and getting along, this original project did consist of another ten acre piece with an original house that was split off, and that place is working productional as a, as a hobby farm, they're still running agri, alfalfa production off of it, having their kids are being able to raise livestock animals, so it's working great, and they have not complained once, and I was a part of that process of that transaction or that sale, and they were aware of the situation, the adverse effects of that property living out there.
And that's what, now I understand that this is a four or five pieces of property that are the ten acre, each a ten acre?
It's only three lots, it, I'm already eligible for one building lot, we did a land division and sold the house and ten acres off, so they're, I'm proposing for three buildable, buildable lots, that are averaging around twelve acres.
Okay, all right, all right, well, you have any, anything else you'd like to add?
Not, is there any questions for me?
Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so you're, you're not planning on living on the, the land, are you?
Not at this time, I do know the lot three closest, farthest away from the dairy, there's going to be plans in the works of maybe building a house there, but it, it's down the road quite a ways, and, and we're hands on, like, who knows, you know, it might be five, ten years for those other two lots even to think about pulling a building permit.
So you don't, you don't have buyers lined up for all of it?
No, absolutely not.
But you're, is it going to be marketed as building a small farm?
That's what, what consists out there, I've lived out in that area for twenty-plus years, I know what the adverse effects are, that's what, I'm going to market to people that I know that can handle that kind of situation, which I've already done, and it's been successful.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you be opposed to meeting with the attorney that provided testimony to look at a nuisance waiver?
Bottom line, I think that's taking rights away from me as a landowner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could we have the gentleman up here again, that was just the one that owns the dairy farm? Yeah, contiguous, I'm sorry.
And also, I wanted to clarify that, Mr. Dunlap, I believe, is the original owner of, that's contiguous to my property, and he owns all that property to the north and the west of me, which is buffered by a fifty-four foot easement for a south power lateral.
Okay.
Come on up, sir.
Okay, come on.
So I guess my question is, do you live on that property?
No, that's my second dairy, I have two dairies in the area, the one that's on the north side of the hill, I have the same issue going on there, but.
Okay, are you, are you familiar with the, the well on this property?
The well on my dairy, on his property.
The one that's adjacent to this.
My understanding is any wells that they're going to put in would be new wells.
Right, but I'm asking you, are you familiar with the existing well on the property that you manage? Right, but I'm asking you, are you familiar with existing well on the property that you manage, that you lease?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, how deep is that well, and have had you, have you had any um nitrate problems with that well?
Absolutely. I just looked at my letters uh from the state. We're a high nitrate area there. That's something that wasn't brought up here. Um I'm running fourteen right now per million. That's over the legal threshold. And that's, that's an area issue. That's not just.
And how deep is your well?
Um anywhere from, I got like six wells there, so anywhere, probably around four hundred average, four hundred to six hundred feet.
So four hundred to six hundred feet, not two hundred, and you're running fourteen and I think ten.
But if I can clarify, the wells that are tested would be my um dairy wells for grade A water. And so I think those are probably not quite as deep, probably about three hundred, pumping at two fifty, something like that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask staff again, can you restate the zoning designation and and what that is and what that generally allows?
Uh yes, Commissioner Davidson, so the zoning in this area is rural residential. It's a ten acre minimum. Um and so these lots are gonna meet that ten acre requirement. Uh rural residential, um it's, like I stated, it's um ag focused with um primary dwellings as a as a secondary use. You know, rangeland is is a primary use as well, but there's also other uses that would be allowed in this area like, you know, contractors' yards and dairy operations and event centers. There's a, there's a list of many different uses that would be allowed. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Just for further clarification, Connor, so this um this land is agricultural irrigated, uh which lists agriculture as the primary use with residents as the secondary use.
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think we've given you your rebuttal, correct?
I just wanted to clarify on the existing well that that I sold with the property last year.
Do you wanna come on?
Yeah.
Do I come up? Go ahead. We'll give you another, we'll give you another rebuttal, because we.
I apologize. I don't have the the exact well log on top of my head, but I believe it was around the two hundred and fifty-six feet range. It was an eight inch well. It passed all inspections, arsenic, nitrate, with flying colors. So there's no contaminations of that well, and it's, and it's used on a daily basis and functions, functions property.
On this property?
Borders to the south of this.
But not on this property.
It was the original house that was on the whole. We did a land division last year and sold that house. So the well is.
Yes, my question is, is the well on this property being presented tonight?
Not currently, but it is the closest well to this property.
It's close, but it's not the one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Inasmuch as we have received the testimony, and I will close the uh hearing on uh application two zero two two zero zero seven one one S H D P L L C, preliminary plat for the three building lots. Okay, what's the uh?
Mr. Chair, um I think what I uh am going to offer tonight, and I'd love to hear your opinion, both of you, but I think I'm really interested in three things. I'm interested in tabling this because I'd like to get more information about the nuisance waiver. This is the first that we've actually heard of a nuisance waiver, and it sounds like it's very kind of a popular tool in the Treasure Valley, uh down in Twin Falls, where there are a lot of dairy farms. So I would like our legal to um look into that for us, number two. Um I really want uh also to have legals help with understanding um production, uh agricultural land. This is ag primary with residential secondary, so I want to be really clear about. That ag, primary ag, actually needs to be production and how production is defined. And then third, I'm really concerned that this obviously is in a high nitrate area because of all the CAFOs. That's going to continue to add to the the nitrates, and if they're already running fourteen milliliters over, um then I think that's uh way over the EPA regulations, and this neighbor's well is, has to go down, what do you say, four hundred to six hundred feet? And so a two hundred foot well just wouldn't do it. So that would also give us a chance for our engineer to maybe do some more exploring out there, just to see what the reality is. This is a high nitrate prior uh priority area. So on those three items, I'd like to offer to table this. Um if I can get a second, and then we can get a date.
Okay, Mr. Davidson.
Well, I think, um you know, hearing the concerns from the uh, from the neighbors, I mean, I'm certainly inclined to uh let the applicant develop on his property, I, but I do understand the concerns of the uh, of the neighbors. And I I can see, you know, the potential for trouble, you know, ten, fifteen years down the line of people moving next to a a CAFO. I mean, I just, I see potential trouble coming. So I am interested in um maybe exploring the the nuisance waiver um a little further, and I think that would protect both parties and protect us from, or the future commissions from having to deal with that. So I think I'll uh, I'll go ahead and second your motion there.
You haven't made a motion yet.
Yeah, I I will. Um but I just wanted to also second on the uh nitrate priority areas. I think there's an area of drilling concern that's fairly, fairly close to this, and I think that there are some CDH rules. If you go down two hundred feet or more, then you have to have extra well protection or whatever it is, so you're not contaminating the deeper aquifer. So let's have um our county engineer take a look at that restriction as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, um if you're ready, I'm gonna go ahead and offer to table, what date?
August tenth.
Okay. Uh project two zero two two zero zero seven one one dash S to August tenth, twenty twenty-two, uh to allow staff to move forward with um having our county engineer do more of exploratory uh analysis out there of the nitrates, uh the depth of well and the type of well that we need to go in if it needs to go into four hundred to six hundred feet like the neighbors. Number two, um the identify and define better the um production. Um this is ag first and home secondary, and it looks like the applicant is proposing homes as the primary with possibly no ag. So I think before we make any conditions of approval, we'll need to understand production ag a little bit better. And then number three, to explore what a nuisance waiver is, um and the legal agreements and ramifications of that.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, there, uh we have a motion, and uh I might add that uh I grew up on a farm. I lived right next to two dairy farms when I grew up, and I understood the uh, the uh, the ramifications of living next to a, to a dairy farm. And it wasn't the uh, the uh insects that bothered me the most, it was the smell. But uh I uh, I had an event out in the Kuna area, and it smelled like freedom to me. Because I remembered that that, it just kinda reminded me of 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 home. But but I think these are some uh, some reasonable uh expectations. I, I, the only question I would have of staff is, is that enough time for the, for the requirements that we're asking?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that is a somewhat of a tight turnaround to be able to submit items in advance at that August tenth hearing, but I think we can probably, probably pull that off.
Okay, let's make sure we hear from Leon. Just make sure the attorney has time to do the waiver, nuisance waiver.
Chairman Commissioners, obviously it is a tight turnaround. Um I've asked that we try to get something set up with them by this Friday to get a copy of that nuisance waiver, a better understanding of it, and coordinate with our legal team to get their input. Um you know, typically our memos are due the following Tuesday to be ready for you for that next hearing. Uh in the event that we have trouble meeting that, we'll probably table this to the September hearing. But I, I think two of the three things we can get answers on pretty quick. It's really just reviewing that nuisance waiver proposal and understanding better what that is. It could be a.
Okay, so you're comfortable with August staff, knowing that we may need to table it one more time?
Yeah, tabling's always an option, but um as busy as our hearings are these days, I'd prefer that we try to keep it for August.
Well, I think it should be, uh, we should note for the record that uh this nuisance waiver does not, does not detract from anyone's property rights. It's merely a notice of uh of potential and 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 the people buying it. The way I understand it, I guess we'll, we'll have to see it. We'll have to see what the actual, what it actually says, but it doesn't sound like it, you know, to me. Anyway, you've got the uh, the uh, we've heard the motion. Is there uh any further discussion? Hearing none, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. We now have two applications that uh are essentially the same thing. And so uh I have decided as a chair to take them both up at the same time. What that will mean is uh I will open the public hearing. I will, in fact, I will now open the public hearing on application two zero two two zero zero one seven eight A dash Blue Sky Farm LLC. And I'll open the public hearing on two zero two two zero zero one seven eight A, uh Cosgriff, Kevin Cosgriff. Uh by opening these public hearings and having the same public hearing, we will allow both applicants to ma- to to present a case. We'll have the staff, we'll have the staff give us a report, and then we'll take testimony. Because it 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 occurred to me that if we had two separate hearings, we'd hear the same testimony over and over again. And so I I thought it'd be better if we just heard it once. We'll give both applicants a chance to uh uh give us their case, and then we'll have public testimony, and then we'll close the uh, the public hearing. Okay, so I've opened the public hearing, and we'll hear from staff first.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Uh the items before you, as you mentioned, are two appeals of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a conditional use and master site plan for a club, lodge, or social hall associated with a UPIC flower farm. Uh the appellant's are Kevin Cosgriff and the owner of Blue Sky Farms, Betty Dryden, who was also the original applicant. Pictured here in red is the subject property, which is a five point five one acre lot zoned RUT within Heather Haven Estates subdivision, which is located near the North Eagle foothills at two six eight five North Haven Drive. Uh pictured in blue is the appellant's property, which abuts the subject property to the east. A blue outline is also around the subject property indicating that they are an appellant as well. Um the property is accessed from Haven Drive, a local roadway that connects to Homer Road to the north. Approximately a half mile to the east is Ballantine Lane, uh while Park Lane is approximately two thirds of a mile to the west. Uh these collector roadways serve as the primary ingress and egress to and from the neighborhood, as well as Homer Road, which is the east-west connection. Uh properties in the surrounding vicinity are also zoned RUT and primarily consist of single-family residences on five acre lots. Um there are other agriculturally focused businesses in the area um operating or approved to operate, including Red Chair Lavender, which is directly west of the subject property, uh Thirty One Hundred Cellars, which you've recently heard up on Homer Road, and Buckhorn Vineyard to the south on Deerfield Court. Depicted here is a proposed site plan for the project. Uh the owners of Blue Sky Farm live in the single-family home closest to Haven Drive. A new fifty-two stall parking lot is proposed at the rear of the property. Uh the UPIC flower area is located east of the home near Haven Drive, although I'll have the applicant maybe clarify that a little bit more. It may have expanded since our last GIS aerial. Uh there's also a one hundred and eighty square foot small accessory building that they plan to use as part of the project as well. And so just orient to, this is north, given the site plan we received. So out here is Haven Drive. Um over here is the Red Chair Lavender. The appellant would be to the south of the site plan pictured. Um and again, here's the parking lot at the rear of the property behind the home and the uh UPIC flower area.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Leon, again, walk us through all the buildings on here, so let us know what's proposed and what's existing.
Yes, so there is an existing home here. This is an existing, I, and I I will have the applicant clarify. Um I believe this is the small building they're planning to use for the UPIC operation, or perhaps it's the small, even smaller one back here. Um so yeah, these are all existing, and then the parking lot and drive aisle would be new. Um they've not yet been installed. And then the UPIC area, I believe, is over in this area of the property. Uh behind here is the Farmers Union Canal. And again, out front is Haven Drive.
Yeah, thank you.
So some key conditions of approval from the P and Z following two public hearings on the project. Um was originally heard in April. They tabled the item, asked the applicants to go back and meet with the neighborhood again to try to work out some new details of their operation and perhaps modify it to address some concerns. Ultimately, on May twenty-sixth, they approved the project with these following key conditions. Um so the operation for events would be July eighth through October fifteenth. Uh there would be six events throughout the operating season on Thursdays to include three paint evenings and three craft evenings, uh which would be ticketed with a maximum of thirty-five people from six to eight P M. Flower picking for attendees would be allowed during those events. There will be one large event for flower picking in July, and they gave them the option of Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday for four hours, either closer in the morning from nine to one, or, sorry, there's a small typo there, um four to eight P M in the afternoon. Uh there would be one food truck allowed, one dessert cart, and a maximum of three outside um crafters or vendors to participate in the event. They would reduce the parking from, originally it was proposed at ninety-five and was reduced down to a total of fifty-two, including two ADA parking spaces. Uh and that they would fence the parking area adjacent to the canal, the Farmers Union Canal that I pointed out earlier in my presentation. That was a request of the Canal Company. Uh they'd have landscape lighting and a two-by-four sign during operation of the business, and that all parking must be contained on site. And then here we're.
Before you move on, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
For clarification, Leon, if I'm looking on page two, the executive summary, um we've got the planning and zoning, limited the conditions, and it has the bullet points here. And going on to page three, it says no dessert carts and no vendor, food vendors allowed.
Yeah, so that's a second slide here. Um so they did further restrict the project by prohibiting amplified music, no dessert carts or food vendors outside of that one event, so they are allowing them to have that during the, the one event. That's the major opening event in July.
The one, okay, the one large event, so, okay.
Um and then no alcohol is allowed to be served on the property. And finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission would review the project after one year to see how it performed against these conditions, which would again give kind of all parties interested an opportunity to talk about how this is going and see if modifications are appropriate. So that, those were the, the conditions placed on the project.
Okay.
So now I'll go into the appeal points of each side. Um so Kevin Cosgriff appealed, and I'll read his. There's a detailed staff response, and I, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna read all of those. If you want me to pause and kind of walk you through any of them, I'm happy to do that. But the first point by Mr. Cosgriff was that the P and Z erred when it accepted the dubious assertion that proposed uses, uh social hall, proposing to operate as a small flower UPIC with occasional events, is an actual allowed use under a close and more discerning reading of relevant sections of Ada County Code. So disputing the use itself is point number one. Um they accept that a social hall, as the intended application, is anything other than a commercial event venue, business that requires use of most of the property in one way or another. So they're contesting the fact that it is more commercial in nature. Um accepted the fact that approximately fifty space parking lot on site and in plain view, even with proposed landscape plan, is acceptable on residential area. And they point out urban public facilities are extended, which is generally not applied to parking lots. Um fourth point, they seem to endorse development service staff coaching the applicant during pre-application conference to quote-unquote "not pigeonhole yourself" in case applicants may seek more in the future. So there's a response from staff regarding that item as well. Um that they appear to be applying produce stand agricultural roadside from Ada County Code to accommodate a UPIC commercial business. That is a approval and use outside of what was requested as a conditional use. That's a director level approval that was already granted. Um they did not fully uphold Ada County Code requirement to ensure that intended use does not create an undue encroachment and or burden on the neighbors. And then finally, uh accepted staff explanation that by giving undeserved deference to the City of Eagle Conference of Plan, a commercial event venue business can be justified inside a residential zoned area because the applicant also grows flowers. In their mind, that was in essence a de facto double standard between this residential area and any other in Ada County. So those were the appeal points of Mr. Cosgriff, who ultimately would like this not to be approved and and to, to go away. So now we have the appeal points of the original applicant, who also stated that they believe the Planning and Zoning Commission erred and would like modifications to that original approval in the form of the following conditions. And I will ask you to clarify with them these requests and to make sure you fully understand them during their testimony tonight. So they are fine with the the days of operation, July eighth through October fifteenth. They would like hours from five to nine on Wednesdays, um six Thursdays per season that would go from five to eight. Fridays would be five to nine. Uh Saturdays would be nine to one, uh possible for the opening day, and then. and then six to nine for two farm-to-table dinners that they would like to have throughout the season. Um, opening day would consist of a four-hour event to include a food truck and a dessert cart and up to three vendors. They would be allowed six painting and craft evenings, uh, of up to thirty-five people. And they would like, um, drink carts as a part of that. They want two farm-to-table catered dinners for up to forty people, also ticketed, uh, to involve a local winery and acoustic music or outdoor speakers to be allowed. And then six flower picking evenings per night with a dessert cart on-site. And then finally, they would like simply to be held to the noise ordinance standards versus, uh, complete restriction of outdoor music, either acoustic or, um, via a speaker. Again, all of those points are addressed, uh, in the staff report as well. So we did receive several comments, as you can see in the packet. Uh, in general, those in favor, um, want the project approved because they believe it supports the local economy. It does provide an amenity for the community, and it does help to preserve agricultural heritage in the area. Those opposed are concerned about noise and traffic and potential impacts to safety, um, particularly on roadways that I pointed out earlier, Homer Road, Ballentine, and Park Lane. And then there's this concern in general about how this impacts the residential character of that area. So, so as I mentioned, uh, detailed responses to the arguments of both appellants are in the staff report. In general, however, staff believes the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision and the conditions they placed on the project attempt to strike a balance between the request of the applicant and the concerns of the neighbors. Furthermore, the one-year review required by these conditions gives all concerned parties an opportunity to request adjustments based on the performance of the business. So as such, staff recommends the board deny both appeals and uphold P and Z's original approval. And I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Are there any questions of, uh, our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hey, go ahead.
Again, referring back to this summary here, um, just for clarification, it doesn't list the P and Z's, um, approval conditional, uh, uses here. Doesn't have those six events, but you just mentioned that it does have the six events?
No, that's something that the appellant is asking for.
Is asking for, but it was not approved under P and Z's.
Well, there is, so they will have, they are allowing six events throughout the operating season, uh, for a maximum of three by people, but there's no drinks or other things allowed on-site.
Where are the six events listed? I don't see those.
Let me pull up my staff report real quick.
I've got one large, one large event.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, there are page two of the executive summary. Looks like the third bullet.
Planning zoning, I have one year to determine on that one. I don't have six events.
Yeah, there's six events on the-
Yeah, let me, let me pull up the staff report real quick and we'll-
Yeah, but that's-
Confirm that with you.
Six events.
No, but that's what they were asking. That's their, that's Blue Sky's request.
All right, so.
This is planning and zoning, I understand.
Okay.
All right. So opening up, it's a large staff report. It might take a second, so I apologize.
Yeah, it's just, you know, when you were trying to cram this much information into you executive summaries.
In there. Um, so bullet number three in the executive summary, there will be six events.
Yeah, that is where-
So that is what the, oh, that's, sorry, that's the staff, that they modified their request. So let me go to what P and Z actually-
Yeah, that third bullet, that's what I'm showing is, is what the ask was. They, they modified their request, Blue Skies. That's not what P and Z approved.
Well, so P and Z, if you look at page eight of the staff report, and it carries over to page nine, you will see item C says six painting and craft evenings for up to thirty-five people. Um, no, sorry, that's Blue Sky. Sorry, there's, this is-
I don't think, I don't think P and Z's from this report. P and Z did not approve six events.
For you here.
Yeah, they have six painting and oil craft events on page nine.
All right. So we're looking at the signed findings. Let me go to the conditions to confirm that request real quick.
Okay. Again, page nine, that's Blue Skies. That's not P and Z's.
So the findings that were ultimately signed by P and Z were, um, so point number fifteen in the signed findings says there will be six events throughout their operating season on Thursdays to include three paint evenings and three craft evenings, up to thirty-five people at each, from six to eight PM. So the P and Z did allow for that to occur. The difference, I believe, in the request of one of the appellants is to allow for a beverage cart, I believe. And again, we'll, yeah, they are, they would like to cer- have a, a beverage cart on-site for those. So that's the difference there. They're still getting the six events. They just want a beverage cart as a part of it.
Do you have, um, this kind of a slide for P and Z's approval? That has all the conditions of approval from P and Z?
So this slide is the key conditions. The findings document has every condition.
Okay, so this is it?
Yeah. So point number two says six events.
Okay, so they do have six events on Thursdays. Okay. P and Z, maximum three hundred, thirty-five.
Both P and Z and the applicant are in agreement on that. It's just the app- the applicant of Blue Sky Farms would like to serve a drink during the, those events. So.
Alcohol or drinks.
Yeah, right. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That, at the one event or the six events?
So the one event, they also would have food vendors and that, so the applicant wants beverages at the big event and the six events. The P and Z restricted alcohol at all events said never serve alcohol or sell alcohol on site as part of the operation.
And do you remember what their reasoning was?
Uh, I think it was based on testimony from the, the neighborhood.
Neighborhood, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of our staff?
Not this time.
Okay, no questions. Um, okay, for, uh, presentation, we'll have the, uh, Blue Sky Farm LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. You have fifteen minutes.
Right. Chairman Beck and Commissioners, my name is Lauren Allen. I'm here to speak behalf of Blue Sky Farm. I'm one of the owners. I want to start off by showing why we're here in the first place. Um, this first column you see here in front of you and projected up here is what we requested for at our first hearing.
Can you put the mic a little closer to your mouth?
Is that better?
Yep.
So it's all of that stuff listed, um, the flower picking, the food trucks, the two larger events, eight craft nights, three farm-to-table dinners, um, six, six evenings of dessert carts, ninety-five parking spaces, and music from a small backyard speaker. Everything listed here was in compliance as stated by the conclusions of law adopted by Ada County, and this is why our CUP was recommended for approval by Diana Sanders twice before today. At our first public hearing, the P and Z Commissioners were going to pass our CUP as is in that first column, but decided to table it so that we could hold a neighborhood meeting and come to an agreement with our neighbors. Unfortunately, it didn't go well. At the second pup P and Z hearing, we presented a much condensed plan, and this condensed plan was still in compliance with the conclusions of law adopted by Ada County. Even though it was in compliance, almost everything we requested was crossed off and taken away with no rhyme or reason. This next column shows what we were left with after the second hearing. So as, um, Leon stated, our flower picking with the reduced hour or the hour to eight, um, six paint and craft evenings reduced to fifty's parking spaces in the opening day. I do want to point out that the opening day, they did take off the food trucks and dessert cart and only left the three crafters for this opening day. Um, and this third column is what we're requesting today. So it's a reduced plan of our original plan. So our regular flower picking schedule, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Um, the re- we already have a permit for that, but the reason we're asking for this CUP is to hold six ticketed paint nights, two ticketed farm-to-table dinners, and to have six dessert carts. That's why we're applying for the CUP. Our season is approximately July eighth through October fifteenth for a total of fifty days. We're only open fifty days and sometimes less than that, depending on when our flowers are ready. Of those fifty days, fourteen will be small events with limited attendance because they're ticketed events, um, other than those, uh, six dessert carts. So far this season, we have been open for flower picking operating under our certificate we currently hold. The next slides are pictures of what these days look like and what our parking lot looked like on opening weekend. So we just had our opening weekend two weeks ago. Uh, you may also see pictures of our parking lot full from a couple of weeks ago because we did allow Red Chair Lavender to use our parking lot as good neighbors. Um, a lot of neighbors complain that they have parking all over the street, and this year they didn't because we let them use our parking lot um, as property owners and as neighbors. Um, these pictures, though, of our, our, of our parking lot on opening day. So Friday, um, July fifteenth, I have hour-by-hour screenshots of what our parking lot looked like. Um, cars come and go. Um, you can see that there's not very many cars there. Um, these pictures are not only for you guys to see, but also, um, to let the Cosgriffs get an idea of what the parking lot looks like and what our field looks like, since they do not currently live in Idaho. They live in a different state, and, um, they've never witnessed any of our events and what we truly do here. Um, as far as we know, the Cosgriffs will not be moving in for another year as they just renewed the lease to their renters, and the Cosgriffs are, um, in opposition of this. And I think my dad will take out the renter at the time.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Beck, Commander Commissioner Kenyon, and Commissioner Davidson. We at Blue Sky Farm are not proposing a use outside of what is already existing in the Eagle area and more specifically, right next door, Red Chair Lavender, where their CUP allows them to be open year-round, seven days a week. They have a very well-attended two-day festival with live music, food, and many vendors, paint nights, yoga classes, among other events. Several other U-Pic farms already exist in Eagle and the surrounding areas, and given the rural-urban transition overlay, the use is completely appropriate and in compliance with all ordinances in the Eagle Comprehensive Plan adopted by Ada County and the Ada County Comprehensive Plan. Keeping this in mind, and with the spirit of promoting the free use of private property, the P and Z Commission overstepped their authority by imposing a greater restriction on Blue Sky Farm than was appropriate or within the scope of their authority. In the findings and fact conclusions of law and order, the Commission found that what we are proposing by having small events such as paint nights and two farm-to-table dinners, one food truck and a dessert cart for opening day, dessert carts on six occasions, and background music from a single patio speaker would not create undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties. The Commission also found that what we are proposing is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. In the conclusions of law, the Commission found that project number two zero two-two zero zero one seven eight dash CU dash MSP complies with the Eagle Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County, and it complies with Article eight dash four E. It complies with section eight dash five dash three dash two-nine, and it complies with Article eight dash five B of the Ada County Code. Having said this, the Commission then inappropriately deleted all events from the application with the exception of six paint nights. By striking through the entire schedule for the events, Commission impermissibly restricted Blue Sky to do virtually the exact same thing we applied to do, hold events. By striking the ability to hold events on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, the Commission eliminated three of the four opportunities for Blue Sky to successfully operate the business as the CUP requested. We believe there is, there is a significant discrepancy in the findings and fact and conclusions of law documented dated May twenty-sixth and the decision actually rendered by the Commission. In the findings and conclusion sections, the document consistently indicates that the requested uses detailed in the application are consistent with the law and appropriate comprehensive plans. However, the terms of approval section eliminates the items that were found to be consistent with law and plans. Blue Sky Farm holds a separate zoning permit that allows us to function as a U-Pic flower farm. We are allowed to be open daily from May to October for twelve hours daily. We have no restrictions on the number of patrons or parking spaces. At our flower farm, people come and pick flowers, stay a while to make their arrangements, or enjoy their flowers, then leave. It flows throughout the day with not many people on the property at one time. Yet, what we are proposing is far less open hours that we are allowed. This is because we all have day jobs. The only time we use our zoning permit is when we accommodate a group of preschool kids or special needs family that request visit to our farm. The events we are proposing are a vital part of our flower farm and allow us to promote small businesses and agriculture in our area, including our U-Pic. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we strongly feel that the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision was in relevant part arbitrary, capricious, and in abuse of discretion and not based on substantial competent evidence. As such, we respectfully appeal the decision made by Planning and Zoning on May twenty-sixth and very respectfully request that the Board of, of the County Commissioners reverse the conditions of approval. This same plan and our first vague plan has been recommended for approval twice by P and Z prior to this. We are a small, family-run flower farm and nothing more. This is our third year in business. We are open for approximately fifty days a year and for two to four hours at a time. We are a place that brings families in our community together and have a huge amount of support, as shown by more than one thousand signatures of support we collected by knocking on doors in our area, speaking to people who visited our farm in Red Chair Lavender, and through our local followers on social media. We have never had any issues in the past, and code enforcement has never had a reason to come to our farm. As a family, we have been stalked online and in person, had our daughter's wedding pictures spread. We've had people stop and take pictures of us working on our field, taking pictures of our friends and clients running through and around the flowers. We have been told that we do not belong in the area and to get out. We have been accused of brandishing a flamethrower that, and we've had the police called on us for ridiculous reasons. We have also been accused of poisoning pets, and we have had unwanted people trespassing in our property, property. Unfortunately, there's also been events that have led us to pursue a civil lawsuit, which we cannot discuss at this time. The whole situation is very unfortunate. Leon, if you can please hit the slideshow, please. This is a review of the finding of facts, and Leon will start with the highlighted areas. Our CUP complies fully with the findings of facts and conclusions of law and order. One, our request encourages an economic-based complementary Eagles rural identity. Number two, it promotes employment opportunity and encourages expansion by attracting additional businesses and industry so residents will, will be provided with adequate commercial services and facilities. The report, then the report goes on to say that the Commission finds that the proposed event center is in compliance with Eagles Comprehensive Plan. Number four, it also states that the proposed use is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Proposed use shall not create adverse impacts on surrounding properties. Then the report goes on to continue saying that we comply as well as it describes what we are requesting. In the conclusions of law, as I stated before, it says our CUP request complies with Ada County Code. With the Exhibit A, why then, if our CUP request complies with code, does the Commission cross out all of the requests but one? We are already open Wednesdays and Fridays and Saturdays with our zoning permit. We're merely asking for one extra hour on two days. Our farm-to-table dinners are very limited to forty-five people, which would equal about twenty cars or twenty vehicles. We request only one opening day event. We request six dessert carts, such as ice cream cart for kids that come to the farm. None of these requests are for large events. A flower farm does not attract large crowds. Chairman Beck, Commissioners, we are, we very respectfully request that you re- request that you reserve, reverse the P and Z Commission's decisions and grant us our CUP because we are in full compliance with Ada County Code and Eagles Comprehensive Plan. And I, and, and I, I think what we're facing right now is- And I think what we're facing right now is picture four gas stations. One is able to pump 100 gallons, this one's able to pump five, this one's able to pump 15, and this one is able to pump one. Our area is very inconsistent and sometimes we feel that it's unfair maybe to us or to other people, so we humbly ask that you approve what we ask. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So this third column on the sheet that your daughter handed up, that's all you're asking for at the moment?
Correct. Yes.
So I don't see anything on there about food trucks. You're not asking for food trucks?
It's the six dessert carts. The reason we took the food trucks off is one of the biggest concerns for neighbors.
If you could come to the microphone.
So the only food trucks we're asking for are the dessert carts. Sometimes they're just on like a little wheelie cart, it's not even a truck. The reason we took those out was because that was a really big concern from neighbors and we decided to take those out entirely. So...
And I don't see you're asking for drinks either.
That was another concern was like the bar carts. So we took those out as well.
And you're not asking for a one big event?
So that, I was under the impression that that was taken out by the P&amp;Z, but I guess it was not taken out. But they did take out the food trucks and left three crafters. We will still have an opening day because we need to have an opening day to open and that's what we have, that's what I displayed with the pictures. So we did have our opening day two weeks ago, that's what it looked like. But yeah, food trucks was crossed out of that list.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question to staff, is there anything that the P&amp;Z left in that they didn't include in their...
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I would like to clarify, I think in my presentation I said the large event would have food trucks and beverage carts and Ms. Allen is correct. P&amp;Z did eliminate those from that event and restricted alcohol and things like that. In hearing what the applicant's asking for, I think the farm-to-table dinners, which would involve alcohol as well as, I think, the paint night that had alcohol served as well, would require allowing catering permits. So again, the serving of alcohol. So the P&amp;Z Commission condition that says no alcohol to be served on-site would need to be modified unless they didn't want to have that incorporated with their operation.
So follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner Davidson's request, so in her list on the third, so is that one large event approved by P&amp;Z or not approved at this point by P&amp;Z?
There is a large event in July allowed by P&amp;Z. It would be four hours. Let me switch to my presentation, which I think hopefully shows it here. Yeah, item number three, one large event, and it should be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM or 4:00 to 8:00 PM is what the P&amp;Z had stated in their approval. I did have food truck and dessert cart there and to, again, Ms. Allen's point, P&amp;Z did eliminate that from the condition, so that's not something that P&amp;Z approved.
So follow-up, so P&amp;Z did approve the one large event, but up to how many people?
There wasn't a max number of people at the opening day event. They didn't specify any max number. They did restrict, I believe, the smaller events. The craft evenings allow for 35 people. Yeah, I didn't see any limitation on the large event in terms of number of people that could attend.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So is that, as far as the alcohol goes, is that correct that you want to have alcohol during the two farm-to-table dinners and six paint and craft evenings?
That is correct.
And you would do that through a catering permit?
So for the two farm-to-table dinners, it's typically a local Eagle winery and they can come and show what they have and it would be a limited one to two beverages per person and the winery would be responsible for that under their permit and license. And for the paint nights, it would be a one-drink minimum and it wouldn't just be limited to alcohol. It would be one of our, someone, none of those events would just be limited to alcohol. Obviously, we'd have like lemonade or water or something for people to drink there as well. But at the paint evenings, it would be a one wine glass limit.
And the request for music from a backyard speaker, that would be for the six paint and craft evenings and the two farm-to-table dinners?
We typically play music, we play music as a family all day long on our property and we just have a speaker going on our patio back, in our personal backyard. We literally have a small speaker, we brought it, that sits on our patio and we play that when we're not operating as Blue Sky and when we are operating as Blue Sky.
Have you tested the type of speaker you'd want to use for these events and walked to the surrounding properties to see how far the sound travels?
Yes, of course.
And what's your opinion of how far the sound travels?
I think we've found a good volume that everyone that operates speaker knows to turn that volume to when we are operating as Blue Sky Farm. We've walked to all four corners of our property to make sure that it's not excessive.
It's nothing but background music?
Yeah.
That's all that it is.
It's very appropriate music, it's not vulgar music, it's not excessively loud.
All right, I don't think I have any more questions at the moment.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do for staff, though.
Go ahead.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
So just a better understanding, so all the homes around here are on five-acre lots, most of them, correct? And what's the closest homes in terms of distance?
Yeah, Chairman, Madam Commissioner, so the nearest home to the west, which is the Red Chair Lavender business, is approximately 200 feet away. Oh, sorry, there's, sorry, some WebEx warning.
But they have the same business, right? So they're not gonna...
Yeah, and then to the east, the Cosgriffs, from the flower-picking area, they're probably 150 to 200 feet roughly, but the flower-picking area goes to the edge of the eastern property line.
How close is the parking lot?
If we look at the site plan here, hopefully, this down here is the property line to the east. So this is an emergency turnaround area required by the fire department. This here is a 25-foot setback requirement for the RUT zone, so we're 100 feet away from the edge of the property line with that parking lot. To the west, again, that's the Red Chair Lavender business, that drive aisle is, you know, gets within 50 feet of, and actually, some of the parking is within like 25 feet of that western property line.
Okay. So originally, the applicant asked for 95 spaces and P&amp;Z shrunk that down to 50?
Yeah. And that was partially the applicant's too, you know, they recognized that that was a lot, again, I'll let them speak for themselves. They seemed happy with the 50 that ultimately everyone landed on, but 95 was a number that got a lot of people upset in the neighborhood, so...
Was it ATD that would weigh in on this, on the impact of 50 cars driving down Homer Road?
Ada County Highway District would be the agency because it's a local roadway. They provided no comment on the project. We asked them about it, they said they had no comment.
So these cars, if it filled up, 50 cars would normally, would they come down Park Lane, over to Homer, and then down?
Yeah, depending on, depending on the way that you get there, but yeah, Park Lane, so Beacon Light is south of the property here, it's not pictured in the visual, but it's probably another 200 to 400 feet south of the edge of the aerial. So that's Beacon Light, so obviously, pretty massive transportation corridor. Then the ways into the neighborhood to get to the Haven Drive area are either Ballentine or Park up to Homer Road and then you make your way into the Loop Road of Haven Drive.
And how many homes are on Haven Drive total?
Let's count them real quick. Like that front on Haven Drive, is that what we'd like to see?
Yeah, on either side of Haven Drive, just, you know, either side of it.
I'm counting 18 really quickly, but I'm sure someone from the neighborhood will tell me exactly the number.
It looks like Ballpark, yeah, so about, yeah, 15 to 18 folks, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff? Hearing none, we will now have a presentation from Kevin Cosgriff, another applicant.
They're online, they'll be ready in just a second.
Are you Kevin Cosgriff?
I'm his attorney.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Are you both speaking or you're gonna speak for him? Are you gonna split time?
I think he wants me to speak, so I'll speak on the Cosgriff's behalf. Brian Ertz, 380 South Fourth Street, Boise, Idaho, 83701, just across the street.
You get 15 minutes. Go ahead.
Kevin and Barbara Cosgriff are owners of 2641 North Haven Drive, Eagle, Idaho. You saw on the slide, it's the property immediately adjacent to the east. The Cosgriffs bought the property because of the residential nature of the neighborhood. They like the quiet, they like the views, they like the open spaces, they like to use their property in a way that residential users typically use their property. That's free of commercial interference and all of the burdens associated with the commercial interference. You'll note the Loop Road and the question that was just asked regarding the number of residential property owners on that road. It's a closed Loop Road. All of the commercial use will be felt by all of the property owners on that closed Loop Road, a road that's typically utilized for residential activities, grandchildren walking down the street safely, horse riding, all of the uses that are typically associated with residential use. What we're talking about today is a remarkable and dramatic commercialization of the use of the property on a closed residential area, a closed Loop Road. That's the issue.
Looks like our screen's... So I apologize, I'm gonna go talk to our IT.
Go ahead and stop the clock.
Okay, we'll stop the time for a minute while we get the technicalities figured out.
I get some water.
How many people signed up to testify?
Thank you. So as this board is aware, interpreting the Ada County Code in the Approval Criteria Act Code, Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 9 of the Code directs that Title 8 shall be interpreted to equally protect citizens from the undue encroachment on their private property by their neighbor's use of their private property and equally protect each citizen's right to use of their property without creating undue burden upon their neighbors. When we talk about planning and zoning and we talk about the conditions that were complained of in the findings, those findings were made and formed by the conditions that they imposed, a significant curtailment of the ask. But what the appellant, my client, what they're arguing is, is that those findings, that the undue burden to properties in the vicinity or in the neighbors would be mitigated by the conditions, there's a lack of substantial credible evidence to support that finding and that that finding was made in an arbitrary and capricious manner, given the showing, the dramatic showing, that the applicant has been failing to adhere to the conditions of the existing use that's already permitted. Namely, of the 25 days where there were events or commercial utilization of the property, they failed to adhere to the timeframe and those events exceeded the 8:00 PM and were into 9:00 PM, so there's no reason to believe that the same won't occur in the future and that's a real problem. Additionally, the alcohol, obviously, the appellant, my client, is in support of curtailing alcohol use, but that's a radically dangerous proposition given the residential use in a closed Loop, as we talked about, closed secondary road without any law enforcement The Planning and Zoning Commission's findings and conclusions that the application has conditioned will not create undue adverse impacts surrounding properties are arbitrary and capricious, lack substantial competent evidence to support such a finding where, the bottom line of this is that it's a commercial use, okay? So the social hall with the flower picking, it sounds benign, but that's not what's happening here. The reason outside vendors are being invited to retail and sell their products is because this is an event center where commercial activities are being proposed over the course of several nights in the summer in a residential neighborhood that hasn't seen this impact before. And all the property owners and neighbors in that area bought with the assumption and the legal right to that residential use such that their kids would be safe on the streets, it'd be relatively quiet, you'll see substantial evidence on record regarding all of the normal residential uses and the impacts associated with the commercialization of this area. And you'll also see evidence in the record regarding the struggles that have happened in the past year under the existing permit, okay? And so knowing that the permit had been violated, knowing that the applicant is willing to violate the Ada County Code with respect to off-site parking by failing to get a permit in that regard, it's arbitrary and capricious and lacking in substantial evidence to assume that compliance with those conditions is going to take place in the future. Adverse impacts will spill over. I'd ask the Commissioners to take a look at what a social hall is and the uses that are described pursuant to code and the definition of a social hall, weddings, receptions, all of these do not bear the burdens and the use types or the nature of use involving the commercialization of the property and of the neighborhood, which is occurring here, hosting other businesses to market their wares. hosting other businesses to market their wares and calling out the general public into a closed-loop residential neighborhood. With respect to the existing permit, that's at 85386A8, where the hours are restrained to 8:00 PM, and where you've got substantial evidence on record saying that for most of these events under the existing permit, they've exceeded that and flouted that with respect to their existing use in the permit. There's no reasonable use, and so, there's no reasonable basis, or there lacks substantial evidence to suggest that they're going to continue, that they're going to adhere to the conditions imposed. So, we've seen we've seen the request for 95 parking spaces, we've seen it reduced to 50. We've also seen the applicant testify as to they only anticipate 35 people at any given event, around 35 people. Then why do you need 50 parking spaces? Right? And so, that's the concern of the neighbors. Their, the noise, the potential risk associated with ongoing commercial alcohol distribution, the music, and you'll hear from the neighbors about, about the noise. All of these are taking place in a residential neighborhood that's being burdened by the commercialization of the closed loop. And so, the Cosgryffs respectfully request that the commission uphold their appeal and deny the application. If what they want to do is indeed associated with the U-PIC, they can continue to do it on the permit that they have. But that's not what's happening here. They want to have festivals. They want to have festivals in a residential neighborhood. And that's what's occurred.
Okay.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you authorized to speak on behalf of any other neighbor?
No, I, I'm, the Cosgryffs.
Okay. And so, I don't know if you've been following the developments where we have had before a similar situations with wineries, and you may have seen that we've approved wineries with conditions that they can sell alcohol and probably a larger volume than what's being proposed here. But maybe if you could focus just on the impacts to your client's property, just try to be very specific and to the point, because I'm kind of hearing a lot of, you know, theoretical concerns, but if you could focus exclusively on what's directly negatively impacting your client if this were to pass.
So, 50 headlights passing when they're trying to have a quiet evening at home, private, along the road, concern about grandkids strolling on the road, noise, potential, I mean, all of the nuisances associated with commercial use of a property. This application is being presented as though it's just, you know, a peripheral use associated with agriculture, right? And that's how they're utilizing it. But that's not what's happening at all. They're hosting multiple outside vendors. They're inviting, you know, many, many people, such that a parking lot of 50 in a residential neighborhood occurs. And so, all of the debris associated with commercial activities, they can't control the consumers that are coming. And the burden associated with enforcement. And so, it's going to be up to the neighbors to call anytime a nuisance interferes with their use of their property. And as you've seen, it's going to be, you know, the rural nature of that neighborhood, there's going to be a long, you know, response time associated with that, and they're going to be expected to bear the burden of enforcement on that. I would also point out that, you know, there's been conversation about being in compliance with the Eagle Comprehensive Plan.
Is this response directly associated with Commissioner Davidson's? Are you going to respond anymore, or are you finished?
I'm finished, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you anything else? No, let's move on to testimony.
Okay, well, thank you. Before we take testimony, we will allow each applicant a three-minute rebuttal.
Chairman, do we typically do rebuttal after public testimony?
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Let's do testimony then. Okay.
What will the time limit for testimony give us, Mr. Chair?
Time limit's three minutes. We have, we have somebody online who wants to talk?
They've already testified, they've had their 15 minutes.
They've had their 15 minutes.
She's kind of independent, wait.
She's part of the advocacy party, so.
Okay, well, we'll move on, then we'll go back to her then, okay? All right. We have Tyler Allen.
Hello, Commissioners. Tyler Allen, 2685 North Haven Drive, Eagle, Idaho. The lawyer made some good points about some stuff and the property owners being the Cosgryffs. They bought this property from a place called Dream Haven Ranch, it was operating under a CUP for their current, they had a riding business for, for horse lessons and things like that. So, they bought a property that was a current CUP. They also bought the property, knowing that we existed, kind of the point earlier in the other debate about we were here first, kind of a thing. We were already in existence before they even bought the property. The Realtor informed them of us existing already, and Red Chair Lavender is already there, and the winery behind their property, adjacent to their property, was already there as well. So, maybe a lack of due diligence of them purchasing the property and now coming in to change that, a little concerning. It's also going to be hard for them to enjoy an evening in Eagle, Idaho, when they live 2,391 miles away currently from the current property. They currently lease their property out, and as far as we're concerned, and heard from the current tenants, that they just renewed a lease for another year. So, that's something that should be on record and is noted. The only traffic concerns, one of the things on Leon's thing here about traffic concerns was, it's actually from the neighbors. There's, we have on camera multiple neighbors stopping, getting out of their cars, and filming and recording little girls running through a flower field. It's, it's pretty wrong. I want to spend the rest of my time talking about what we're asking for on that third column. First off, the dessert cart, it's a, it's a little dessert cart that is a wagon or a shave-ice cart, it's not this big grand food truck. My brother-in-law lives in a, in a subdivision in Nampa with 7,000 to 10,000 square foot lots, and they have a food truck weekly in the summer months that goes to that, and it's, it's an opportunity for the community. And we're not even talking about a, a food truck, we're talking about an ice cream cart. Another thing is music from our backyard speaker. It's, it's here tonight, if you guys would like to see it. We play that regardless of we're open or not as a backyard speaker when we're gardening and doing things of that nature. The reason, last, I'll make this point last, the reason for adding the hour from, to nine o'clock, I just looked at the current weather, it's 7:35 in Eagle, or 7:35 here, and it's still 99 degrees. So, the extension of that hour is simply just because it's a little bit cooler. There's also some, some on record with, that we have picnic tables and umbrellas now. We had more strollers and more elderly with walkers over this past weekend. It's simply a place for people to sit down and pick their flowers, take a break, drink a little bit of water.
Mr. Chair, what's your relationship to the applicant?
I'm, I'm the son-in-law of the owner.
They're related?
Yes.
Okay, so you probably should have been part of the application testimony, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have Tracy Barbieri.
We're going to come together, Stephen and Tracy.
Oh, okay.
It would be helpful for us to state whether you're, what party you're for or against.
We're for.
We're for, against, Stephen and Tracy, we're residents of Ada County, and we're just customers of it. I believe in the presentation, they spoke about, again, they're only open between 35 to 50 days a year, and each of those days are only open two to four hours. So, if you do the math on that, that means they're open up between 9.5 and 13.5% of the year. That's a definition of a small business, not some big business, as they were talking earlier about a big corporation or whatnot. We've been going to Blue Skies for the last two years and have thoroughly enjoyed ourselves. It's a very family-friendly environment, and would be sad to see them go. Every time that we've gone there, we follow the signs where we parked in the back, we actually attended their opening day event, it was a very quiet event at the same time. And I don't even believe, from my opinion, from the road, that you can even see the parking lot, the cars back there. You can't, and that, when you go in one of your presentation houses here, the garages here, and there's a roadway that goes right between and goes down to the area where they have the parking, so you can't even see the parking from the road, if I'm correct. So, basically, what I'm looking for is just that you guys approve what Blue Sky is requesting for, because again, they're within compliance, and like they stated earlier, this business has already been in business, and now, again, somebody bought the property knowing that it was there. And I was going to bring you the exact example that the gentleman right before I did, about the farmers that were here before us, about the dairies, about the situation about, now all of a sudden they want to sell the residential, and they're afraid that the residential's are going to close down the dairies. Well, this is the situation happening right now. This is an existing business that's already been open, somebody's coming in and doesn't even live in the area, and now is trying to close down a local business from thousands of miles away.
Okay.
The event that we went to, and just so that you all know, these are events that families go to, there are kids running around. A police officer did drive by slowly, I waved to him, said hello to him at the time when he drove by to the event. We go there because it's a sense of peace in this area. My husband does suffer from early onset dementia, so to go to a place like this and be able to just feel free, and there's not any constraints, there's not loud noises, there's nothing going on around in the area that are going to be overstimulation. If you know anything about dementia, I'm not going to bring him into an area that is overstimulating. This is why we go to an event like that. Yes, there are children running around because they're enjoying themselves. So, for someone to say they're worried about their grandchildren being there, I would worry that my grandchildren couldn't come to something like this. I would want my grandchildren to be at a place like this. You get to pick flowers, there's a sense of peace, there's a sense of community, and it's joyful. And for somebody to want to take that away, it makes me sad, it makes me think that those are people who don't have enough joy in their life.
Like they say, don't let them steal your joy.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Barb Jekyll.
Leon, we have a couple of exhibits, right?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got them, okay.
I'll read those into the record here shortly.
Hey Barb, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Barb Jekyll, 2862 Haven Drive, Heather Haven Subdivision Covenant, stating in art, "In order to better carry out and preserve the intentions of the grantors to make this subdivision strictly one of agricultural and related residential acres, these protective restrictions and covenants shall run with the land described herein and shall be binding on the parties heretofore and all successors entitled or interest to said real property or any part thereof until January 1990, at which times said protective restrictions will automatically extend for successive periods of 10 years." In Implantation, "This reflects the rural quality of life desired by the majority of what I know to be 16 subdivision property owners, and that's been expressed in opposition for most of them. It's been the norm and the way for over 40 years. Traffic was sparse and resident connected. Now vehicles have increased severalfold and many drive well above the speed limit. I find that that more detrimental than not to public health, safety, and welfare, especially given it's a narrow local road. I disagree with the City of Eagle's findings in support, beginning with Goal 5.3. The high amount of local resident opposition coming from those that actually live in this rural area negates it. Implantation Strategy 5.5F states new commercial development outside of the CBD. That reinforces Blue Sky being considered a commercial operation. Event centers hosting public gatherings of thousands plus participants reported and hundreds of vehicles is way beyond small-scale agriculture and completely inappropriate in a subdivision. P&amp;Z awarded about 20 less spaces than what Red Chair had, and they entertained those amounts over their festival weekend. So, similar attendance could potentially happen at Blue Sky, which is not complementary to rural identity." Implantation Strategy 5.5H, another reference to commercial status. Blue Sky has stated they are family-operated, no outside employees. Eagle had a 30-acre park, which had provided, which could have provided higher success rate for their goals and strategies. It would be better to replace that asset than aid in the deterioration of my neighborhood and property value. Blue Sky would have the flower agriculture, the park would provide a large area for events, classes, vendors, botany area paths, and meditation sections. Many Blue Sky supporters spoke to just being there for the day, children playing flower beauty and fulfilling some emotional strain needs. Ada County and Eagle could do a joint effect as they did with the bike park. I ask Commissioners to approve the Cosgryff Letter of Appeal. Some opposing local property owners also are in support of ACC-819A not being fully upheld. If Blue Sky is furthered, participant maximum should be added to daily operation and opening event conditions, including children age 3-plus. Parking should be limited to only the spaces on their property."
Quick question.
Quick question.
Does the subdivision have current CCNRs?
That paper I gave you? Yes.
Are they current? Because you said it was extended only 10 years after 1990.
And automatically renews, I didn't read it all, because I'm only short time, automatically resumes for successive periods of 10 years unless the owner or owners have the legal title to not less than 2/3 of the planted resident tracks or planted lots object.
Thank you.
So, it automatically renews.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Jekyll's exhibit will be 37A, and the previous one by Ms. Allen is 36A.
Okay, thank you. All right. Tamara Earp. Okay, go ahead, Tamara, you have three minutes.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tamara Earp. I'm a resident in the affected area at 4032 North Valentine Lane. Right now, we're up against three possible event centers in our residential area in the Eagle foothills, and all within one mile of each other, off of Homer. There are three roads that lead up to Homer, which is, which is landlocked. So, the three roads are Linder Park and Valentine, with many of those outside patrons mostly using Valentine and Park to get to Homer and these events, and they leave out those same roads. While you, you've already heard from 3100 sellers, Blue Sky Farms, and now, and soon you will, we will be right here again for the third one. You're seeing the same exact people, because this event centers continue to apply for conditional use permits in the same residential area, which we all live in and raise our families. Blue Sky Flowers Farm is dead set on having events, and they have recently proven they will set them up. They will set them up when and how they want, and because they have a permit to be a U-PIC from 8:00 to 8:00. And they want to, what they are doing is beyond a U-PIC. I passed by Berries on Valentine, which is a U-PIC. He opens a few days a week in the mornings, people come in, pick berries, and leave. There's no music, and there's no tables or umbrella setup. There's no music, and there's no tables or umbrellas set up. They pick, pay, and leave. Blue Sky Flower Farms is still holding events without food trucks, yet still violating their current U-Pick permit by allowing patrons to socialize, play music, and stay way past the eight PM time they are allotted. They even have an event already planned for next week, Thursday, August fourth, from six to eight PM with Idaho Lovely. Mr. Dryden stood here in front of you back on June first for the hearing of thirty-one hundred sellers and due DeWalt sellers, and stated the signatures should not be allowed. He was at Red Chair Lavender Festival on the Fourth of July weekend, sitting there at a table gathering signatures. As he mentioned, he went door to door. He did not go to door to door. He's getting signatures at their events, as well as Red Chair Lavender's events. And so, these are not U-Pick events. People come, socialize, and enjoy the atmosphere of Blue Sky Flower Farms that they offer. That same atmosphere is why most of us have chosen to move out here where it's peaceful. The attitude received by Mr. Dryden when helping to set up the Coscrif's notice sign was totally out of line. Also, the allowance of disrespect from their son towards us shows their character and who they are. While Lauren was trying to stay civil and apologize, asking why the sign needed to be put up that day, because they were about to open for their Friday evening event. Are we not allowed to put the notice sign up at our, at their, you know, at our convenience? I was not aware it had to be on their terms and not ours. It was a basic standing sign, no holes were dug. He threatened to move it, and yet there was no other area to visibly place it without being half in the street or on a slope.
Okay.
Where it would have fallen over. Basically, I want you to hear from the neighbors and not the outsiders. We're the ones that live there, we're the ones that deal with the traffic and the speeding and the noise and everything, so.
Thank you.
I want you to deny the, their.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Riley Chung.
Hi, Riley Chung, one one six one zero West Hollendale Drive. I am currently the youth governor of Idaho, and I'm here representing for Blue Sky Farms. In Eagle, there is this gorgeous farm that I hope many of you have the pleasure of visiting. A place who makes a community, a place who makes us as Idaho stand out. This farm takes Idaho's nature, and it gives back to the community in a warm, simplistic, welcoming way. And think to yourself, what is the harm of using flowers and festivities to create a happy environment? There is none, but there are people here today who think there is. The rezoning of this agricultural boundary is going to limit this farm's ability to do business and give back to the community. Community is the most important thing in Idaho. Blue Sky Farms will be asked to limit the number of guests they're allowed to have through their gates, asked to halt their partnership with other small businesses that keep our economy afloat. This is going to completely limit the festivities that they are allowed to currently provide. Again, I ask, what is the harm in this? The only way for Idaho to grow and to nourish the incoming citizens from other neighboring states is to welcome them with warm arms. These businesses, such as Blue Sky Farms and the Red Lavender Chair Festival, does just that. It brings families and friends closer, it allows smaller businesses to thrive, and it gets revenue to keep our economy growing. It keeps the simplicity of nature alive. As a fellow youth governor of mine who resides in South Dakota, he had a special connection with small locally-owned businesses, and he has taken the time to support Blue Sky Farms from across the country. He has written a letter in support that will be read in just a moment. It states, "Dear Ada County, I may not be a citizen of Idaho, but I do come from a small town in central South Dakota where the population is seven hundred. I am writing this letter today in support of Blue Sky Farms. From the conversations I've had with the owners and my fellow youth governor, Ms. Riley Chung of Idaho, Blue Sky Farms is a family-friendly farm that holds such events as paint nights, farm-to-table dinners, and hosts locally-owned businesses. I want to mention that Blue Sky Farms is a locally-owned and driven business, and coming from such small community, these businesses is what makes my town thrive. This business not only helps bring your community together, but it creates a more economic advantage to Eagle. This agricultural side of Blue Sky Farms is very important, and the more land that is taken by urban planning, the more open areas are being taken that could be used for farming. Blue Sky Farms may not be your traditional farm, in the case of growing crops for food production, but they have created a new style of agriculture that is beneficial to all. Rezoning will close the window of opportunity for them to bring in more money for your community. Thank you for your time, South Dakota Youth Governor." I want to thank you all as well, and I want to emphasize this again. What is the harm of growing flowers and bringing kindness, safe, and happy environments to our community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good timing.
What, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was curious, what's a youth governor?
I'm glad you asked. I always love explaining that. It's a program through the YMCA where us youth get to do mock court trials and represent the youth, and so I went through a lot of trials and tribulations to become youth governor so I can represent the youth and the YMCA. I recently got to go to a conference in Washington DC and meet with our senator, go over a bunch of bills and acts that are supposedly going to be passed in Idaho. So I'm here just to represent the youth and the next generation that's going to come up, and Blue Sky Farms is one of those that creates a nice environment for us as, you know, COVID as we're recovering in the hectic environment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Marilyn Hathaway.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Marilyn Hathaway, thirty-eight hundred North Croftway.
Microphone.
What?
The microphone.
Bring it. Eagle, Eagle, Idaho.
Thank you.
I just want to say, just a few comments. Fifty days a year doesn't sound like a lot, but it's someone's entire summer. I should state that I'm opposed to expanding Blue Sky Farms' request. I wish you could have been here at the zoning meeting. I would have loved if you could have been here, it was so insightful. This place was packed with people opposed to Blue Sky, and one of the zoning commissioners said that all the people against it were local people, they were the residential people, and he said, "Everybody I'm seeing here that's for it has been brought in from out of the area," and he really pointed that out. One of the things that was mentioned tonight is that they have already flouted what they do, you know, the regulations so far. So if they are allowed to start serving alcohol, how do you control the amount of alcohol consumed? Who monitors that? We can't, we as neighbors can't go on the property and monitor that. How is that controlled? And with the attitudes they've shown so far, most of us in the neighborhood have no idea that they will even start to adhere to one or two drinks. And one other question I've had that I brought up at zoning is, when you have that many people there, you've got to have porta potties, right? And so, are they going to be bringing porta potties in for all these events? They're obviously necessary if you're having dinners and having food carts, you need porta potties, and those have to be serviced. Those mean trucks are coming in and servicing porta potties in a residential area, and I don't know how you regulate that. It seems like we kind of get thrown to the wolves after we leave here. You are the guardians for us to protect our residential neighborhood. And they, even the neighborhood meeting, when one of the commissioners sent us back to the neighborhood meeting, the amount of people that showed up was unbelievable, and just expressing, "We want a flower farm. Come and pick your flowers." But having the big dinners, having the alcohol, when you, I wouldn't even think they'd want alcohol if they're talking about all the children coming to pick flowers. There's children in the street, there's people out with strollers. I, my whole thing is that, yes, have a flower farm, have a place of joy, have people come pick the flowers, but don't have any alcohol on the premises. And again, I would like you to consider the porta potty problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Alice. Ads are on Alice, I can't understand. She's what?
She's not speaking.
Oh, okay. Take her off the list then. Cheryl. Chris, Christians of the Christensen.
Good evening. Cheryl Christensen, twenty-one twenty-five West Buckhorn Court, Eagle, Idaho. I'm south of these guys. When Red Chair Lavender, I could hear from my house their music. That's one of the reasons why planning and zoning said no big speakers. I don't have a problem, well, none of us do. I'm saying the same thing that everybody else has had. Even the junior governor, I don't have a problem, or the youth governor, I don't have a problem with them having a place to go and do stuff like this. I have a problem with the wine, I have a problem with the food trucks. What we're talking is a lot of traffic. I live off of Valentine, I am on the corner of Buckhorn Court and Valentine, just north of Beacon Light. And the cars, the roads are slanted, they go southbound, and we get bicycles. We had Georgia's Bicycle Shop have a race, there was two hundred and some bicycles on Homer, Linder, and coming down Valentine, and then going Beacon Light Road. It's a safety issue. We don't have a problem with them having kids, paint nights, we have a problem with them having an event center. And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christine Peterson.
Let me start to get them lined up, we're going to be here a long time.
Did you need me to say something?
Line up over here, there's a couple others, Betty Dryden and Monica Ralphill, I think you stand over here, you can get up here, speak fast.
Okay. Christine Peterson, two-two-seven-three West Burns and Valentine in Eagle. I live three doors down from a U-Pick blueberry farm that does more than Red Chair Lavender. It is no inconvenience, it's a joy to the neighborhood to have an ag business and support the ag business for the few days a year that they're doing it. Yeah, there's a couple of people, we'll put a little yellow flag by my sprinkler so that someone doesn't park on top of my sprinkler. What it is giving to the community, what it is giving back being, we are an ag-based area, let's support that, let's enhance that. Coming in from out of the area and saying, "Oh no, you can't do what you've always done, we're going to change it." I have been to many days at Blue Sky Farms, at Red Chair Lavender, at Blue Sky Farm, their little speaker, I've got pictures from opening day. You walked ten feet away from that speaker, and you couldn't hear it. Few people even asked to have it turned up because it was such pleasant music. While we're out picking flowers, there were, at the peak, eight cars in the parking lot on the grass. You cannot even see that from the road, it dips down behind it. I mean, it was the most pleasurable, and I mean, I see more at our little blueberry farm that's, you know, one acre blueberries right behind our house or right next door to it. This is just the most pleasant, environmentally enhancing, small business enhancing, why we're not supporting small businesses to grow, they're what support all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Betty Dryden.
I'm the applicant, so I'll just speak.
Okay.
Have we split the lineup?
Yeah, it'd be helpful, so.
Yeah, we asked you, we've got a few more, it'd be helpful.
You could sit in the front row, like the first three seats here.
Yeah, if you're going to testify, come on up.
If you're going to testify.
Come on up and sit in the front row.
What's the, what's the order, Mr. Chair?
Well, I can read them off here, we have Mike Turner. Is it Mike Turner? All right, come on Mike.
Good evening, I'm Mike Turner, I live at twenty-seven thirty-eight West Deerfield Court, Eagle. This is not a, a situation where we are complaining about growing and cutting flowers. This is about a social club in a residential neighborhood, and he also said that that's just the start, that there'll become more commercial businesses in residential subdivision. That's not right. I've lived here for thirty years, they've come in and for the last three years, I go, "Oh, well, that's okay, we can cut flowers, and now we can have a social club." That's not right. I mean, it's just, this red lavender chair, I live probably a thousand feet away, and during their festival, we could hear their music quite plainly. I mean, it was very, very loud. So it's, it's just, we bought into this subdivision, and it's a residential subdivision, to have a residential neighborhood, not have wineries, not have social clubs, not have, you know, if somebody wants to grow and pick flowers, knock yourself out. But when you're opening this up to social clubs, does that grow into weddings? It's just a monster you got by the tail. And if you don't curtail it, we're going to be down here every month saying the same old thing.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Monica Ralph, Ralph, Ralphill.
Thank you Commissioners. My wife signed us in, so she put both names down.
Okay.
My name is Ralphill, I reside at two-two-seven-six West Wapoot in Meridian, so we're not local to the neighborhood. I'm in support of Blue Sky Farms. I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. But the reason we moved to Ada County is the friendliness of its people, its natural beauty and outdoor activities, and its blend of urban and rural, which is what we're talking about here. And we were impressed that Boise made the top spot on Time Magazine's Cities That Get It Right. My wife, her eighty-nine-year-old mother, and I have been to the Lavender Harvest Festival at Red Chair Lavender, where we and hundreds or so more other Boisins of all ages picked lavender and learned how lavender was distilled to make oils for soaps and lotions, and other wonderful natural products. We and other families enjoyed the live music under the shade of the trees. Children, young and old, got to see and pet llamas, and they had some liquor there also. At Blue Sky Farm, under beautiful blue Idaho sky, the three of us and many other Boisins picked yellow, white, pink snapdragons, yellow and white daisies, and other flowers, many new to us. We and families, young and old, picnic in the grass and watched the young children help their moms and dads pick flowers, and learn about the honeybees. Blue Sky Farm, a neighbor to Red Chair Lavender, has requested approval to establish a venue and hold limited, small events that are similar to what have already been approved for Red Chair Lavender. Websites like Verbo advertise the Lavender Harvest Festival. I quote, "Red Chair Lavender is located northeast of Eagle, and was once just a hayfield. After years of hard work and patience, owners Bill and Wendy transformed the fields into a gorgeous lavender farm that has become our favorite place to visit for Idahoans and out-of-state visitors." Blue Sky Farm has also transformed their fields into a gorgeous flower farm. They want to share this with Idahoans and others. These farms and events are good for Ada County, they promote its natural beauty and blend of urban and rural, they educate us and our children, they provide a place where families can be families away from the distractions of TV and video games. In reading the four-hundred-and-sixty-two-page staff report, we see that the April fourteenth staff report originally recommended approval with, with no restrictions. After the May twenty-sixth commission approval with severe restrictions, the current staff report reverses the previous recommendations to approve without restrictions, supports the additional May twenty-six restrictions, and recommends the commission deny the Blue Sky Farms' current appeal. In reading the four-hundred-and-sixty-two-page staff report, we see no substantive reason for the current recommendations and restrictions. for the current recommendations and restrictions.
Okay, if you could wrap it up?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Attila Gekos?
Us.
Us, Gekos, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Attila Chikosh, named after Attila the Hun, in case you were wondering. I was born in Eastern Europe, under a dictator. Nobody owned anything, including the land that they lived on. My father left everything behind to bring us to America to give us an opportunity to truly enjoy a little bit of freedom. And one of the things that I've always admired about America was property rights. Property rights. It blows my mind that even in a state like Idaho, we have folks that think they can dictate what a property owner can do on their own property. Folks, the reason P&amp;Z went ahead and modified their recommendations wasn't because it was out of statute. It was because of all the noise and all the lies and all the misinformation that was provided by the so-called neighbors, some that don't even live anywhere nearby. I don't live nearby, but I visit the farm. My daughter works there. As far as people that are familiar with what goes on, we're pretty darn familiar with what goes on. But I find exception to the lies that continue to go down. The traffic? They got blasted because when Red Chair had their event, they went ahead and allowed those folks that were parking on the street. Blue Sky allowed those folks to come and park on their land so that way they could be good neighbors and not have a whole bunch of people on the street. Neighbors didn't like that because they had wail over that 50-car mark on their property. The reason the original 95 lot, parking spot lot came in was because the landscape engineer came in and said, hey, these neighbors are complaining that there's gonna be hundreds of people here. Let's make sure that we can show that we have all this parking available. And planning and zoning said, wait a minute, you're gonna have 95 people? The most they've had at any one time is about 20 to 25 cars. 20 to 25 cars. And folks, everyone keeps bringing up this alcohol safety and things of that nature. Wine is not alcohol. Scotch is alcohol. Scotch, I could understand. But wine? So you have a bunch of families with kids picking flowers, sipping a little bit of wine in the countryside, but folks think that that is just horrific. I implore you to look back at planning and zoning's original application and what their approvals were, because those were correct. They caved to pressure. It's always the little noisy group that seems to get all the attention. Go back to property rights. Go back to looking at the regulations, go back at the rules of law, and approve Blue Sky's appeal. Let them do what they do for the families in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Taylor.
Yes, Lisa Taylor, I live at 2411 East Riverside Drive in Eagle. This is my fourth public hearing, and it makes me sit at the edge of my seat because I have been raised and brought up that we, the past is our past. And what I've heard for the fourth time being here now is everyone wants to dwell on the past, what happened, it happened, instead of moving forward. You know, I'm a personal friend of Blue Sky Farms. I have to worry now that someone's gonna take my picture because I happen to come visit my friends and I might stay after 8:00 PM. And on your personal property rights, I think you can have a glass of wine or a beer or whatever you want on your property. I was there on July 15. There was maybe three cars when I got there, I stayed, okay? The music, I couldn't even hear it once I got out to my car. They have their speaker here. It really frustrates me that we sit here and we listen to certain things and they wanna just talk about the past and take up your time. Blue, Red Chair Lavender advertises on Highway 44 to come to their place. They're open all the time. And yeah, they might have asked for 90-some parking spots because they're a good neighbor, and they do allow Red Chair Lavender people to park at their property. I mean, nobody's here opposing Red Chair Lavender. And I gotta tell you, I was at Red Chair Lavender one day, all day, when I left.
Ma'am, we can hear you, you're the lead to shout.
It was not a, I'm sorry. A problem with parking, I have a loud voice. I just get really frustrated, though, when you sit here and you listen to certain things that are not the issue. They aren't to what they're asking for. You know, our friends, Blue Sky Farms, had a certain, you know, thing they wanted to do. They have scaled way back because of just who they are. I think it's gotten to the point now that certain people just don't like certain people. And that is unfortunate because it has divided the neighborhood. It also is divided, as a friend coming to visit, that I have to worry if someone is, like, taking my picture or doing whatever. And I was raised a lot different, and there's a couple things I just wanna leave everybody with. If you want to enjoy life and see many happy days, keep your tongue from speaking evil and your lips from telling lies. And that comes from 1 Peter 3:10. The people here and the neighbors that wanted to oppose Blue Sky Farms, and maybe they'll come after Red Chair Lavender or somebody else down the road, whatever reason, they don't want maybe, you know, alcohol or drinking, and that's a few of them, and that's their right, and that's okay. But I mean, go to traffic. Nobody has come out there for traffic control. The day I showed up, yes, some police had showed up because someone wanted to say, oh, he was out flame torching, which was not true. And so we should not bear false witness against our neighbors. And that's all I wanna leave you with, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alex End something. Endenito.
I wanna read the next three, who's on deck.
Oh, there, I'm sitting in front there. Yes.
I'm Alex Endenito, I live at 2282 North Grenville Street in Boise. I've known this family for a decade now. I, I mean, they are the most welcoming people I've ever met. As me, I'm a barber in the Napa area, too, and I've even, they've even reached out to me to say, to help me out, say, hey, do you wanna start a business sometime? And things like that, that's how, that's the type of people Eric and Betty and them all are. I also would like to say that I've never once seen traffic in that area when I've been to the farm, and I've been to the farm several times. I don't know what they consider traffic, but I've never seen it. I also know that it is a 35 mile per hour road, I believe, or something like that. And when I drive the speed limit there, I get told by a lot of people that live there. I'm assuming they live there because I see them turn down certain streets that aren't up towards Homer. I also would like to say, too, that the noise next door, I mean, they have full bands next door. That, over here, they have a small speaker and it's, and it's very calm, and it's all families, like, I've never once seen anybody drunk there. I've never once seen anybody, you know, slamming back drinks and taking off. I mean, it's literally a small operation, a small family thing. And it is great for our community, we love it. And the last time we were there, we felt very uneasy because people were at the property line taking photos of my pregnant wife picking flowers. That to me is a little bit weird. It's a little weird to me. You can be upset about a certain thing, of course, but to show intimidation towards a family, in my opinion, that's what that is, is a really sad thing. And to have four people past 8 o'clock that happen to be family members and friends, I mean, I, and they're not even picking flowers, you know, they're already back and hanging out. And I just want you to realize that there's so many people here that love this family that would love to see them continue to impact this community and this great state. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Taylor.
Richard Taylor, 2411 East Riverside Drive, Eagle, Idaho. Like Commissioner Davison said earlier, there are a lot of hypothetical situations that have been discussed, this is my fourth one coming to. Example, one of the first hearings, one of the neighbors opposed was concerned that if someone's child goes up to her fence and her horse kicks them in the face, or reach over and touch my electrocuted fence. Earlier, I mean, if I heard this correctly, I don't know, but that gentleman was saying, public gatherings of thousands and hundreds of cars, I don't know, you could fit hundreds of cars in 50 spots, or even 1,000 people on their property. Another lady back there, assuming people are basically gonna get hammered, that's what they basically make it sound like. People are going there to rip shots and, you know, pole dance or something. Mentioned, you know, why do you wanna have drinks around kids? I mean, I've had a beer around kids. I don't know if you guys have ever had a beer around your own kids or even at a birthday party for kids. Adults usually will have a glass of wine or a beer, so that seems just a little ridiculous. But yeah, it goes back to that whole Ninth Commandment my mom earlier mentioned. Thou should not bear false witness against thy neighbor. And this certain group of people, neighbors, it's not just this one for Blue Sky Farms. They've done it to a lot of other ones I've come to and just really share false testimonies. And I don't know if they claim to be followers of Christ or not, but if they do, I would encourage them to make an appointment with the man upstairs. So I hope you approve Blue Sky Farms, they're a great family. We love attending, and we're blessed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have on the list here.
Chair, how many more do we have?
Two.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you have two more signed up to testify online as well.
Okay. I have Lauren Allen and Eric Allen. Oh, okay. Okay, then we have two people, we have two people in line. Go ahead, get the two people online.
We'll go first with Melanie Johnson.
Okay. Okay, Melanie, are you, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you give us your name and address for the record? And then you have three minutes.
Melanie Johnson, 2924 West Deerfield Court in Eagle. I'm here, I'm here with myself and my husband, John Hocker. I ask you, I ask you to imagine this scenario. I find an established commercial horse property named Dream Haven Ranch in April 2021. It already has a large arena, two large barns, corrals, outbuildings, irrigated pastures, chicken coops, duck ponds, and a 1,900-square-foot house. This ranch has been established since 2010 and offers horse lessons and classes and day camps and mentorships to the public. On the property are dogs that bark, ducks that quack, chickens that gobble, and eight horses. Now, I noticed that this ranch is surrounded by other family ventures on five-acre parcels. Next door is Blue Sky Farm. Two doors down is Red Chair Lavender. Across the street is Gemstone Ranch Services. Directly behind me is Four Seasons Landscaping. Two doors up the road, Ascet Landscaping, and then Eagle Landscape, N2 Landscape, KG Ranch Retreat, and Berries on Ballantyne. I'm about 1,500 feet away toward the east. So in May 2021, I offered to purchase this commercial horse ranch, and my offer is accepted. I'm fully aware of the neighborhood's ventures that are already there, but I still go ahead in June and complete my purchase of this property. I immediately after that start complaining about Blue Sky Farm being next door, even though they're already established. I start to complain about Red Chair Lavender, and I rile up the neighbors on Haven Drive. Now, this is a factual scenario. Conversely, I'm the back gate neighbor to Blue Sky Farms. I live exactly 1,134 feet from them. I don't hear their music. I have been to their farm on opening day. There was maybe five cars in the parking lot. For years, this well-established character of Haven Ranch has included Dream Haven Ranch, Red Chair Lavender, and Blue Sky Farm. So how is it that someone can come into the neighborhood and ask all these people to change their livelihoods? It's completely unfair that the applicant next to Blue Sky is asking this to happen and stirring the pot in our otherwise peaceful neighborhood. So I respectfully ask that you maintain Blue Sky Farm's business and allow them to operate as they've asked July to October without any further interference from neighbors next door or neighbors across the canal who really have no business on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more. I think this is the original applicant, Barbara Cosgriff.
Yes, she's asking since the son-in-law was.
I bet, go ahead.
She's asking to speak since the Dryden son-in-law was able to testify.
Okay, go ahead, she has three minutes.
You're unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I think I'd like to set the record straight a little bit in addition to reinforcing our concerns about the activities, the expanded activities being requested by Blue Sky Farm. Last year, my husband and I purchased our property on North Haven Drive, a peaceful and wonderful, quiet community, and so we thought. And with the hope of retiring there, we like, we purchased it in June of 2021. And at that time, Blue Sky Farm was only certified as a UPIC. We don't have any problem with UPIC, as do, and none of the other neighbors do either. It was not until October 2021 that their commercial activities came to light when they changed the nature of their business and started applying for the CUP. So let's be clear about that. And people have cast, I mean, aspersions on our character about being rabble-rousers, but I think the neighbors have already been concerned about the commercialization of this neighborhood, specifically the over-commercialization of this area for quite some time. For the Planning and Zoning Committee hearing, I submitted for the record a map that demonstrated the overwhelming opposition of the community, the direct community, three-quarters of which are opposed to the Blue Sky Flower Farm commercialization activities, the social hall activities. And as has been stated by other neighbors, no one objects to there being a UPIC flower farm. Our neighbors are all very, very thoughtful people. And one night, that everybody, all of these folks who love to come there and enjoy one or two nights is just fine. But to be subjected to this type of activity for 50 nights in your small rural neighborhood is not okay. And that is not what we saw when we purchased this property. And the abuse of the current conditions under which they've been operating their business and the abusive behavior toward the neighbors, which has been documented by other concerned neighbors, is very troubling to us because I think the neighbors have operated in good faith and shared their concerns thoughtfully when their concerns were finally sought at a community meeting after the first P&amp;Z people tabled the committee, or that tabled their program. So again, we believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission operated some, you know, responsibly or attempted to walk a middle ground. I think they stated post-hearing that they were hoping that everybody was unhappy.
Okay, could you wrap it up? Your three minutes are up.
Thank you, sir.
You want to wrap it up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I have no one else here signed up to testify. Sure, go ahead. We're gonna let you, then we'll let you get up in the front real quick. Sure, go ahead, we're gonna let you, then we'll let you get up in the front real quick.
If you want to testify and you haven't signed up, come sit up on the front.
Come sit up in front, and, uh, I, I'll give you three minutes, state your name and address.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is Joseph Chikini, I live at 2695 North Park Lane, so just right down the street. Uh, you know, when we looked at, at purchasing our home, the Lavender Farm, Blue Sky Farms, the Dude DeWalle, I believe, the winery, that was one of the biggest attractions to getting that property. We had our choice of many around the area, that area is beautiful, they've made it, you know, even better. Um, I hope they pay you guys really well for having to go through all this stuff, because this is unbelievable, hearing this, you know, for people that, you know, like this, they are very welcoming, very good people, I've had the chance to meet them, they've come to my home, um, and this is just for meeting them at, at their events, but what I want to, you know, make clear is that, you, we are direct neighbors, Park is one of the thorough fairs that, that folks go to there. We ride our bikes, I have three little boys, uh, seven-year-old and, and twins that are four, we ride our bikes to the events, we've been to several of them, they pick flowers for their mom, but it is not a, uh, do we feel in danger, like, oh, we should not ride bikes there? Absolutely the, the opposite of that. Um, you know, the, the, uh, sorry, you know, I, I just think that this has morphed into, I mean, this is a flower farm, they're not relocating the stampede from, you know, Ford Center to, you know, Blue Sky Farms, this, this is a very quaint operation, the, the light that, that these folks are, are painting this in could not be further from the truth. Um, and, and, you know, the, one of the draws, I mean, to be honest, if it's just a, a flower picking thing, it, it's, it's not really what it could be, it's, you know, that, those, those food trucks and, and, and the little bit of wine there, no one goes in excess, and it's one of the few low-cost experiences that are really good for families right now. There's not a whole lot of them, and there's a lot of people moving in the area, this is, um, you know, they've made concessions, and I, I wish they wouldn't have pandered to these, these folks, um, because they do have rights, there are, you know, there has a precedent been set right next door to them, they're all really good people, I just hope that you give them their fair shake, and, uh, you know, I hope that these testimonies you hear, you know, outweigh the, you know, vocal minority, that these folks are not representative of, of our, um, you know, of the neighborhoods around there, everyone loves this place, everyone talks about it, and, and there's even discussions, you know, it's just what's going on with that place, why are they being shut down, it's, they would talk about it on next door all the time, there is a buzz, these folks do not have it right, and I hope that you give, reinstate all of the events that they had, because really, it's, it's a good thing for the community. Appreciate your time.
All right, just come in line.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I could get a copy of one of the sign-in sheets, I can bring it to the back for people who have not signed up, they could do so-
Well, they're already here in front.
They're already up here, anyone's is going to testify, they're already up here.
You already got them here.
Just make sure and state your name for the-
Yeah, state your name for the record and address.
Hi, Commissioners, Phil Sutherland, I am, uh, one of the owners of Red Chair Lavender and live, uh, directly next to Blue Sky Farms. Uh, we wanted to come today, uh, me and my, my folks, uh, and speak in favor of Blue Sky Farms. Uh, we found them to be very respectful neighbors, uh, and they, they have certainly improved the land, uh, as, uh, over the last several years. Um, really just wanted to raise two points. Uh, one is that, that, that our neighborhood is in, uh, an overlay district for the city of Eagle, that is, is meant to promote the Eagle Foothills ABA, and as part of the Eagle Comprehensive Plan, it contemplates, uh, a viticulture area with supporting, uh, event centers in that area, as well as agribusiness. So, uh, I think a larger picture here that we'd like the Commissioners to consider is, is creating an environment in this area that, that operates in accordance with the city of Eagle's wishes in being part of that, uh, area of impact. And then, and my second point is, is in terms of the event center, um, that really is a key area of revenue for these businesses, and I think to, uh, to the Dryden's point earlier, coming up with a way to have, have some predictable outcomes here, where we're, we're not making arbitrary decisions about, uh, whether to allow alcohol or not, I think would benefit this, this, uh, area of the valley. Um, and, and just speaking from, from Red Chair's operational experience, these events are where we make the majority of our revenue, and it would be very hard to exist without them, so, uh, I would ask the Commissioners consider that, and as part of promoting businesses, the business has to be able to be profitable. Um, and, you know, certainly, I grew up in this area, my folks bought the, bought the property in 1985, grew up there, we don't want to change the nature of the, the area, we see it as an opportunity to have these agricultural-based businesses thrive in this area and preserve the open space out there, rather than having, as the city expands, increased residential density. So, um, I think I'll conclude there, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, you're next. State your name and address for the record.
Yep, Chris Price, 2642 North Haven Drive, uh, my front door is directly to the north of the Flower U-Pick, um, I open my front door, I'm the closest to it, um, I'm being, I would say, um, if anybody is adversely affected, our family is the most adversely effect, affected. Um, my wife and I, um, she couldn't make it tonight, so I'm speaking on our both, uh, of our paths. She did submit her letter expressing her views, and, um, so the first thing I'd like to point out is, I'm perplexed at how non-residents are being allowed to testify here. It's, it's not impacting them in any way, um, they're, the only thing that they have is, it's positive, and it's great, we're not in opposition of the U-Pick Flower Farm. However, we are in, um, opposition to the over-commercialization of our area. Um, it's a, it's a residential neighborhood, and businesses shouldn't be allowed to do business there, period. Um, so, um, you know, our boys, um, want to ride their bikes there, and there's tons more traffic than there was when we first moved in, so, um, you know, we're adversely affected by the amount of traffic, noise, and activity that does not belong in a residential neighborhood, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, state your name, real-
All right. Kenneth Hebert, 2396 West Buckhorn Court, uh, Blue Sky Farm is trying to compare their cup to Red Chair Lavender's cup, but Red Chair Lavender doesn't have a cup for events throughout the season. Red Chair Lavender doesn't even have a permit to operate as a U-Pick. The only permit they have is for an opening event, an approved permit on an outbuilding to be used in conjunction with a home occupation for group instruction to create lavender products for only one to five people, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday. As we just recently seen at Red Chair's opening event, Blue Sky figured they would let attendees participating at the Lavender Festival on July 2nd and 3rd, 2022, to park on Blue Sky's property. Now, this is really concerning, because Red Chair Lavender had a site inspection by Connor Lindstrom prior to the event, and he noted there was 71 defined spaces for attendees at Red Chair Lavender, and Red Chair, per their permit, is limited vehicles and no parking on the street. That doesn't mean allow attendees to go park in a neighboring lot that isn't approved for. That would defeat the purpose of Connor's pre-site visit, approving the allowed parking spaces, that would ultimately limit the amount of attendees. Both parties, uh, Red Chair Lavender and Blue Sky worked together that weekend, there was over 210 cars at a given time. There was at least 140 cars at Blue Sky's alone at one given time, not throughout the two days. During the two days, there was well over 4,000 people that attended this. Now, where is this review? Connor, code enforcement, wouldn't have been aware of it unless neighbors let them know, and neighbors that were burdened by this event wouldn't know where, where, wouldn't know there was anything they could do unless they reviewed their permit. Now, you can see that people host these events, don't care about how it impacts the neighborhood, they do what they want and stretch the limits and beyond. This is a residential neighborhood we live in, is not a place for these types of businesses that want cups to allow vendors, food trucks, beverage carts, and events. All these do is attract large groups, more traffic, nuisances, random people driving through the neighborhood. U-Pick permits should be limited for Blue Sky, should be the limit for Blue Sky and any others to follow in the neighborhood. Don't change our neighborhood into a commercial festival ground, please deny Blue Sky this conditional use permit, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more here, okay, go ahead, give us your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Nux, I live at 2183 West Homer Road in Eagle. Uh, I support U-Picks, we have several in our neighborhood, um, like the, the Blueberry one on Valentine, um, they're a wonderful thing, but I do not support a cup that makes a home into a residential neighborhood, an event center, or social hall. This is not right. It's, uh, if this is allowed to happen, it will continue to happen, and it will have an adverse effect on the people that live here. This could very well create a domino effect, and I'd like to stop that before it happens. Many people support Blue Sky, I mean, it's obvious, it's true, they seem, you know, like they're very well-liked people, um, but if you notice, the, the, when people get up here and talk, they come from Nampa, Boise, Kuna, Meridian, all over the valley, the few supporters that do come from our rural residential neighborhood have connections to wineries or their own commercial businesses, and they want to see more agribusiness in our neighborhood. Eighty-nine residents in the surrounding area of Blue Sky, uh, signed a petition opposing Blue Sky Farms. Um, I think that's all I want to say, is that the people who are speaking out against this cup, uh, live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes the testimony, we will now allow three-minute rebuttal from each, uh, of the applicants, and we'll start out with the Cosgriffs, because you, you kicked it off, so if you could give us your three-minute rebuttal if you'd like.
Brian Ertz, on behalf of the Cosgriffs. First, it was stated that there's consistency with the Comprehensive Plan of the city of Eagle. I'd like to note that in finding that consistency, they cited goal 5.5, or 5.5, 5.3 as the goal, and then 5.5 implementation strategies, F and H, nestled between F and H is G, which states, "Encourage commercial growth adjacent to the central business district, and discourage isolated commercial development in outlying areas." That's the Eagle Comprehensive Plan. It always astounds me, uh, the cherry-picking of those provisions that occurs, um, but the comp plan, when you're looking at it and interpreting the code, discourages commercial uses, and the citations that they're using to support are referring to commercial uses. I'll reiterate it again. My clients are not opposed to U-Pick. There's no animus to the neighbors. The Cosgriffs are okay with people going out and picking and engaging in that agricultural activity, but the CUP before you is substantially different than an agricultural activity, it's a commercial activity, and the uses that they're asking for, and the entitlements that they're asking for, are beyond all of the uses that they use to defend, they already have entitlement to a U-Pick. They're asking for more than that, they're asking to host other commercial businesses at the site. That's substantially different in a residential neighborhood. You heard testimony regarding the impact, the Cosgriffs are concerned about the impact to the property value, the marketability of their property, and they're concerned about the impacts to their residential use. Residential use, home, what do we think of when we think about home? What is sacred about our use of our home? It's a place that we escape to, for peace, silence, solace, on our terms, that's where we have property rights to that peace and that solace. The commercial use is inconsistent, will cause adverse impacts that can't be mitigated by the conditions imposed, because the applicants have not respected any of the terms associated with the U-Pick that exists. The Cosgriff's property, you heard from Mrs. Cosgriff, it's the side yard, the parking lot is their side yard, it's their visual, they will be directly impacted, and their property will be directly impacted. I thank, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I have the applicant, Blue Sky Farms, would like to, uh, offer a three-minute rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me touch on a few things, um, we do close at 8 o'clock, we have 13 family members that hang out with us after 8 o'clock, we sit down, have a cigar, we enjoy the evening. So if people drive by, there's nobody picking flowers, it's mostly our family and our friends that are there after we shut down. Uh, what people don't understand, I guess, is we have a right to do that, uh, we, we do adhere to the 8 o'clock closing. Uh, secondly, um, somebody also said that we sell other products besides what we sell, we do not, we sell our products only, period. This is the fabrication that starts to, to come up, that are wrong, and they're lies. We sell our product, we don't sell anybody else's product, we do not represent anybody else's product at all. Somebody also said that they've seen people park on the street, nobody parks on the street, we have more, we have plenty of parking space. Our current permit allows us to have as many cars as we want on our property, we never come even close to filling half of it. The reason why people are really upset, because we allowed Red Chair Lavender to park in the parking spaces, because they wanted to catch them, they wanted to have the cars parked on the street so they can call the police, which they did already, and they want to catch them. That's why they're so upset about having them park on our property. We did not have an event that day, we allowed them to park on our personal property that we own, we have that right, period. Somebody also mentioned that we got signatures at Red Chair Lavender Festival, yes, we did, but we were also accused once again that we didn't go door-to-door, that's a fabrication, and that's a lie. My wife and I hopped in the golf cart, and we went door-to-door and got many signatures, that was fabricated. One lady said that we don't have porta-potties, yes, we have porta-potties, that's just part of the plan and part of the permit, to have a porta-potty that gets cleaned weekly. Somebody also mentioned we charge a fee to get in, we don't charge any fees, that's another fabrication. A lot of this, once again, is throwing up his fluff, it's, it's fabricated, we don't charge fees to park or to get in Blue Sky Farm. Our neighbor that's opposed to us that lives right across the street is the one that came to our Flower Farm last year and asked us this year if his daughter can do face painting this year on the Flower Farm. Somebody got ahold of him and said that his property values will go down in value, so he buckled, now he's against us, it's really funny how one year changes. In terms of signatures, yeah, we had 1,000 signatures, more than 80 were in Eagle, a lot more.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Could you wrap it up, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you stand for questions? So, your current U-Pick operation that you have going on now, what is the, uh, hours and the days that you're- days that you're open?
My daughter can answer that much easier because she's the one that arranges that. Would you like her to come up and answer that?
Can you repeat your question, please?
So your current U-PIC operation that you're running now, what are, what are the days and hours that it's open?
Under the certificate we have currently just for the U-PIC.
Yeah.
So under that certificate, we can operate every day from eight to eight. But we don't do that because we have daytime jobs and we cut it down to three days, um, four hours at a time.
Okay, and so in the, the request you're making in your appeal, essentially you'd have the, the same U-PIC operation, but you're adding, you want to add six paint craft evenings, two farm-to-table dinners, and I guess plus the opening season event. So that's, as I count, only eight, eight additional days that would be different than what you do year-round?
Yes, so when I calculated from July eighth through October fifteenth, that was approximately fifty days. Usually it's less than fifty days because of the flowers, they're not quite ready by early July, so we open mid-July. So that's less than fifty days. So I inputted those six paint nights, which is on Thursdays, and the two farm-to-table dinners are already on days that were open, it's just at a later hour. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But just, you know, out of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days in a year, you, you're only asking for six, nine sort of unique events.
So the six paint nights and the two farm-to-table dinners, those are ticketed events. Thirty-five for paint nights and craft nights and forty-five for the dinners. Ticketed events, you don't take more.
Then you're opening, what's your opening event called, kicking off the?
It's opening day, yeah.
Opening day.
Which we already had two weeks ago, which I showed pictures of.
All right, thank you.
I think it's time to close the public hearing. I will close the public hearing on, uh, application two-zero-two, two-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-a, Blue Sky Farms LLC. And I'll also close the public hearing on application two-zero-two, two-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-a, Kevin Cosgriff. What is the?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
So if we've closed the public hearing, do we need to reopen it?
Proceed with that, probably best.
Yep, reopen it if you need to ask more questions.
Do you mind reopening to ask staff a question?
Which application do you want reopened?
Um, Blue Sky.
I'll then reopen the, the Blue Sky application, which is, uh, two-zero-two, two-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-a. Go ahead.
So the question I had is if they have a, if under their current permit, they can do the U-PIC from eight AM to eight PM every day, why was it changed to three days a week by planning and zoning?
Yeah. Chairman McMinisters, there was a, a lot of conversation about the previous entitlement, property right that they have under the zoning certificate for the agricultural produce stand and then what they're asking for here. This would be layering on top of that. Planning and zoning ultimately, I think, walked away from changing the U-PIC flower hours and recognized that as a separate entitlement. But I think the applicants opted to limit their hours based on, again, they said they all work regular jobs and they don't want to be open every day, so they have their own hours limiting themselves, but we didn't place a condition on the project limiting the, the U-PIC aspect of the project. That's still eight to eight, um, seven days a week if they wanted to do that, so.
So what is the, what's the difference between that and the flower picking that's mentioned?
Chairman McMinisters, I believe they wanted to also allow people to pick flowers during some of the ticketed events and they made that distinction. You know, realistically, people could show up to U-PIC flower while other people are painting or crafting. Those things could occur at the same time, but I think they wanted to make it clear that people could be participating in U-PIC, but also be at a ticketed, um, paint or craft evening. And so that's, that's why that was folded in there, but again, there are kind of two separate entitlements attached, that would be attached to the property.
Okay, I think I get it. Okay. You have more questions?
No, I think that's it.
Anybody else have any questions before I close the public hearing again?
No.
Okay. Uh, well then, again, close the public hearing on application two-zero-two, two-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-a, Blue Sky Farms. Now it's up to the board to make a decision. Do we have any, any further discussion or motions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll kick it off here. Um, I just want to be clear that what we're looking at tonight is not anything to do with the U-PIC flower farm, it's an event center, it's a club, lodge, social hall. So when I look at club lodges and social halls, what I take a look at is, um, location, lot size, proximity to neighbors, ingress egress, safety of that, parking, noise, and the neighbors' comments. I really don't take into account whether it's an added amenity for someone who lives a few miles away, um, for example, to ride their bike, um, somewhere. I think when people move out to the rural communities, they don't necessarily, um, expect there to be amenities, um, like, uh, places you can go eat and drink. So in this situation, I'm looking specifically, and conditional use permits are specific to each, um, applicant, there's no cookie cutter approach to this. So I look really closely at the location, um, and I'm looking that this is a rural residential location. It is on a closed, um, round, almost like, looks like a private drive. It's probably not a private drive, but it is only used, or should be only be used for the residents, the few residents that live in there. The lot sizes are five acres, so they're not that large, um, these butt up against other neighborhoods. I look at ingress and egress, um, which in this case is not very good. Um, you've got rural residential roads out here and then you come into another rural road and then you come into, like I said, almost a private road to have to access this. The parking, I think, um, I can't imagine, um, living on a five-acre residential property and having somebody want ninety-five, even if, and fifty parking spaces, thinking that that many park, cars would come in, uh, bring people in there to this type of a neighborhood. So, you know, with that, I, I really think that planning and zoning tried to strike a balance as best they could on this. But I just think this is a rural residential neighborhood, um, and they're asking to have an event center there, and I just don't think that it really fits, um, what the neighborhood is intended to be. And I looked at the, the deed restrictions that go with the land, um, and it appears that they still go with the land, and this certainly doesn't fit in with what people bought into, um, when they purchased properties there. So, you know, with that, um, I'm also looking at safety of children, not on the farm itself, but, um, having, uh, people who want to walk their dogs or kids on their bicycles that would typically be able to use that North Haven Drive loop safely, now won't be able to use it safely with people coming in for commercial business purposes here. So I think there are safety issues and we've heard from enough neighbors tonight to realize that this is causing an undue impact on them. They've already experienced that from the one that's, uh, extorted this one. So, um, I'm going to make a motion. Um, I'll have Mr. Commissioner Davidson weigh in as well, obviously, but I would be inclined to think that planning and zoning really did get it right. Um, and so I would tend to uphold their decision, but I would, I think that they missed the mark on not putting limitations on the one large event, so I would want to put a limitation on the one large event of also thirty-five people. That's all.
Mr. Davidson.
Well, um, I might be going in a little different direction. I didn't feel that the, uh, testimony about the undue burden was, um, significant enough or well-developed enough to, to give me a lot of pause, although I, I do understand the concerns. And, uh, I, I think when you factor in that they're only asking for nine, um, additional events, um, to me, that, that would weigh in favor, especially when I see that the, the two main events they want to do were paint and craft evenings, ticketed to thirty-five people max, two farm-to-table dinners, forty-five people max. That seems like a pretty, um, small footprint for a property.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, um, make sure that Commissioner Davidson knows that that's not what was approved on planning and zoning.
That's not what, that's not what approved, that's what's being asked for from the appellants.
Right, so that wasn't, yeah, so that wasn't what was approved.
Right, right, so. Um, because I'm, I am leaning towards approving the appeal of, uh, the farm, Blue Sky, minus the, uh, music from the backyard speaker. Um, I'd note that they voluntarily withdrew their, you know, desire to have alcohol at any of these events, so with only nine additional events, which are smaller than it seems like what we've approved previously with other wineries, I am leaning towards, um, the appeal of Blue Sky Farm minus the backyard speaker. And certainly with the one-year reexamination, I, you know, I'm willing to, to say, okay, let this go for a year and then hear, hear back from the neighbors and everybody else a year from now to see if this is working out.
You realize they already have six events, plus the one large event?
Yes.
So you're saying that they should have more than that?
What's more of an answer?
Well, so, uh, the P&amp;Z approved six paint and craft evenings. So that would be adding on two more evenings, farm-to-table dinners. So that's only two more than what the, uh, P&amp;Z approved, and apparently it sounds like they approved the opening day event as well.
Mr. Chair, you're the tiebreaker because I'm going to stick with my motion.
Uh, well, I, uh, I'm sort of leaning somewhere between your motion and Commissioner Davidson's motion, because I think I'd like to support the planning and zoning, but I think we could add an event, uh, without, um, breaking the backs of the, of the, of the neighbors. And so I, I, I wouldn't have opposition there. They're already getting, under what planning and zoning approved, was six paint craft evenings and, and an opening evening, isn't that, is that correct?
Chairman, that is correct.
Yeah, so they're already getting an opening evening and the six paint craft evenings. So if we just approved everything that the, that the planning and zoning commission, uh, recommended, uh, they would get six paint craft evenings and then, and an opening evening, uh, as well, and fifty parking spaces on a five-acre parcel. I grew up on a farm, five acres is a big piece of property.
Not really.
Well, it's.
Live right next to one.
Well, yes, I know. It's, it's half a ten acres, let's put it that way. We know that, which is a big piece of property. But, uh, I would, would, would support, uh, the planning and zoning's commission with just adding the one, one event to it, I don't know about the rest of it. And so that's.
Add what event? Which one?
One, the, the farm-to-table dinner deal.
Add one farm-to-table?
Yeah, I, I think that's just fine.
And then would you be willing to, if you're going to make that concession, um, max, have the max, uh, for both events at, what, thirty-five, forty people? If you think any more than that, again, this is a rural residential.
Yeah, forty people would be fine. They're, they're only asking for forty-five, so if we limit it to forty, it's not cutting them down too much.
For both.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Well, it sort of sounds like they've already split the difference because they're asking for thirty-five for the six paint and craft and then forty-five for the farm-to-table dinner.
So if we just had forty for both, that'd be splitting it up pretty good, wouldn't it?
Yeah, okay. I'll make that motion. Mr. Chair.
Well, before you do that, maybe, I don't know if we should address the, uh, the opening day event.
That's already, that's already, that's already approved.
So what, uh?
Max forty people.
That's already approved with the planning and zoning recommendations.
Okay. And what were the recommendations on that, or the restrictions?
Yeah, Chairman McMinister, I'll, I can pull up those, um, findings and you can look at them.
It says there will be one large event for flower picking in July, this would occur on a Wednesday, Friday, Saturday for four hours, nine to one, or four to eight, there will be maximum of three crafters allowed for this event. We're adding up to a maximum of forty people. And then we're adding one farm-to-table event as listed, um, on the previous document.
That sounds correct.
That's correct.
We will probably have you restate all those, just so we make sure we get them right at the end, whatever you land on, so.
I mean, I would be open to allowing them to have a food truck on the opening day event, uh, considering it's one day a year, even though that was not, uh, specified by planning and zoning.
Well, planning and zoning didn't, uh, I, I think we ought to stick.
They said no food vendors, no dessert carts.
I think we ought to stick with that to start out with and, and knowing full well that the applicant, uh.
They can come back next year.
They can come back if it didn't work for them in a year, they can come back and we'll have the same discussion again, but it, it will be a little, at least a year of, of consideration and of, of giving it a go. And I think that's, that's a good thing for the neighborhood as well, because then we'll find out if it's as, if it's as negative as, as, as it been represented. Anyway, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, um, I'm going to move to uphold plan, planning and zoning's decision and deny both applications. Um, I don't know if I need to read them. It's two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-one-seven-eight-a. Is the other one a different number?
Yeah, they're two different numbers.
And two.
Both appeals are under the same number.
Oh, they're the same number?
Yeah, two, yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, yeah, oh, there you go.
So both of those, and uphold the planning, um, so deny the applications, uphold planning and zoning's commission decision, um, based on findings of facts, the testimony we heard, conclusions allowed, staff report. Yeah, conclusions allowed and staff report, um, but I'm going to add a condition of approval, uh, to the planning and zoning's, um, approval, and that condition is going to be, um, that we're going to allow one farm-to-table event, um, with no more than forty people to attend. And we're going to add the one event, large event, is also going to be capped at a maximum of forty people.
Chairman McMinisters, could I ask you to clarify the review? I know you've talked about having this back in front of you, planning and zoning had it back in front of them.
I'm fine with planning and zoning review.
Yeah, yeah. It does need to come back to us. I mean, you, they can go through a process if they want, if they want to alter their, their CUP.
Yeah.
I, I, sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought you said two farm-to-table dinners.
There is, there's, there's the opening one that's already approved and then the one, one additional one.
No, there's no farm-to-table on here. You said one.
Yeah.
So let's go with one, we can add two next year if everything goes well. That's the motion.
Well, the original, uh, application, uh, the original, the planning and zoning has an, an opening event, correct?
Yeah, they have the opening event, the large event.
And if we add one to that is what.
And we added one farm-to-table.
Yeah, that's right, and we added one to that.
And then we're going to need to table this for staff. So what, what's the table date?
August sixteenth, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Kenyon.
Okay, we'll table, they table this August sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
Is that for an OBM? Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be the final then, okay.
Mr. Chair, um.
I'm going to second that motion, so let's go.
Second, okay. Um, okay, are we doing discussion?
Yeah.
I guess if you're seconding that, I, I did want to bring up the, uh, hours proposed by, um, the appellant, that they were asking for one additional hour till nine PM.
I think our staff told us that the, that the restrictions on the hours is put on by the applicant, not by planning and zoning. They're not right.
Well, Chairman McMinister, there is a restriction on the large event ending at eight o'clock. There was no provision for the farm-to-table dinner, the applicant had requested the farm-to-table dinner go until nine PM.
I mean, I'd, I'd be interested in granting that to them, again, considering the temperatures are a hundred degrees, they don't even really start going down until nine o'clock. Nine o'clock seems like a reasonable hour to me, so.
So amend the motion to, for the one, one farm-to-table event to be able to go till nine o'clock instead of eight. That's the amended motion.
You want a second motion then?
And would that include the flower picking ends at the same time? Because that's the.
No, that's, that's on a different one. The flower picking is already eight to eight and that's a different application.
Well, and that's something that they've, that they've restricted themselves.
This is on the event center, the social.
Right, but the, if the people at the event want to pick flowers till nine, I think that's what.
I don't think that's going to be an issue if we go till nine on the one event.
All right. I'll go ahead and second that then.
Okay. Do you have any clarifications? Way on.
Uh, just one, I, it sounds like we're okay with flower picking until nine o'clock at the one farm-to-table.
At the one farm-to-table event.
Okay.
Everything else is eight.
And we'll change the, uh, the, the restrictions and approve this at, uh, at, when, when was the date, the?
August sixteenth, open business meeting.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome, here.
Wow. Yeah.